The City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order, Madam Clerk. Vocal, please.
Here.
Dionne.
Here.
Kilby. Palludi LaBeau. Lee.
Here.
Peckham.
Here.
Pelletier.
Yeah.
Ferrera.
Here.
Pursuant to the open meeting, Laura N. Persim may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on our agenda this evening, but before we get into that, I'd just like to take a moment to ask the community and the City Council to please keep in your prayers, Attorney Counselor Kilby's wife's mother passed away. Counselor Kilby will not be joining us this evening, so please, on behalf of the Kilby family, Monique and her family, if you could please keep Attorney Counselor Kilby in your prayers, and I will reemphasize that this evening as well. First item on our agenda this evening is citizens' input. Madam Clerk?
To President of the Forward City Council, Cliff Ponti, members of the council, and City Clerk Allison Bouchard, let me just begin by sharing the sentiment of Counselor Trotley regarding how we will miss Allison reading these citizen input letters. It's getting to the point where I'm writing these now to take best advantage of her fine speaking voice. Could Meryl Streep perform a more dramatic reading or read the lines better? I don't know if I'm going to get to this.
She's right. Look over at her.
Are you crying?
We will never know unless Meryl moves to Fall River and somehow supplants Allison. Until then, we are all the worse for your non-dramatic performance. God knows there's just an excess of drama watching the meetings, but hope they reconsider and you can continue your fine readings. To the topics at hand, and I offer two in my three minutes. First, my suggestion is while the city administrator position remains temporarily filled with Mr. McCoy, having given his commitment to return to the Fall River Housing Authority at a somewhat date certain, and after hearing Mrs. Sahadi enunciate the fact that she's the sole occupant in the CFO's office, no support staff as they have in New Bedford, and no significant assistant. My suggestion is that while the city administrator's job remains somewhat open, now I would suggest is a good time to rework the job duties of the city administrator. When Kathy Ann Viveras stepped down following Mayor Coogan's victory in November of 2019, the job of city administrator was assigned to Mrs. Sahadi, as was her performing her Herculean task of getting Fall River through the confusing trials and federal hurdles and accessing all funds from CARES Act, as well as serving as chairperson of the Fall River Housing Authority and her extensive duties as chief financial officer. I'm a bit worn out just typing this, never mind her doing it. I say, let Mrs. Sahadi weigh in on what duties the seated administrator would have in his or her bucket and look at this position as the best way to support Mrs. Sahadi. With all that she has done over the last 16 months and is now serving on the mayor's panel to advise on best and most practical use of the ARPA monies, why not give her an assistant that she can offload some of her duties? Fall River could not afford and can't lose someone like Mrs. Sahadi, but burnout happens even to CPAs and Juris Doctorate holders. Accolades aren't really a substitute for sharing a burden for her doing two jobs plus. After all, Mrs. Sahadi, you're no spring chicken.
You're not supposed to be laughing about that.
I'm sorry. I want her before the meeting. And this is like trying to be a spring chicken on steroids. She should have the absolute power to set out in the city administrator job how he or she could augment and support your role. My second point is brief, but it relates to points the CFO made about being creative in filling positions with understanding the budget constraints, and I think this could work with Mrs. Sahadi's profession as a CPA. What about looking to have retired professionals like engineers volunteer their time with a salary being assigned to that position, which they would donate to the city as a charitable contribution? Perhaps there are professionals, be they engineers or attorneys or even physicians, that would like to stay active, and a large charitable deduction might be an option, which could offset taxes from their retirement income. But I don't think we can accept the status quo if we are looking to move ahead. I think status quo is Latin for "same old, same old." Ideas and new ones are what's needed, and we only need to look to New Bedford to see how their ideas were implemented to address long-term structural issues like rising power costs. Someone had that idea a few years ago, and Mayor John Mitchell listened, and that saves millions over decades. Just as New Bedford once again is taking lead on stabilizing and giving relief to its residential taxpayers, I think my three minutes are up. But I tend to read fast, and thanks again, Ms. Bouchard, for patiently and with style and professionalism giving it the old Meryl Streep dramatic reading. If I were in the chamber, I'd suggest three tiers, four like Mrs. Sahadi wearing many hats. Edward Hotkinson, Fall River.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I filed a resolution yesterday, and there were some email problems. The city clerk and the city council clerk weren't able to open it. The resolution was in regards to what's been going on in the media between a meeting and...I filed a resolution to take the he said, she said, or pretty much to request that all meetings from here on out are either by appointed or elected, obviously outside of executive session, described, televised, and put out to the public from here on out. So I did file that resolution. Unfortunately, the email was not able to be opened. Madam Clerk does have that resolution now, and I'm requesting that it be added to the end of the agenda.
Yeah, so Counselor, just for the record, Counselor Peckham and I did speak just moments ago with the clerk prior to. There was a communication glitch. I will honor that request. I'm just going to ask that you get it over to the clerk. They can put it, read it, and the council will take that up at the end of the agenda.
Okay, and I believe you did get it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Constancy five.
Just making sure that there's no open meeting laws that are violated.
Nope, it wasn't anticipated.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier for a citation.
Oh, citation. Sure.
Yay.
Oh. Okay, we got an official city citation here, and I must inform the councilors that I was going to put it in last week when we were talking about Mr. Hay, but the council president already put it in. So I called up today. I said, hey, he's my buddy, and I didn't get a chance to put the citation in. And Cliff says, don't worry about it. I put it in for everybody, and you can give it out tonight. I said, okay. I'm all right with that. Where's Mr. Ray? Oh, here he comes. And his lovely wife. She must've got the day off. You pretty well know all I feel about Ray, being his buddy, his friend for so many years, working on a counselor with Ray, and you've done an excellent job with the veterans, with the wall, and just about every monument that you've visited throughout your career as a veteran agent. And I'm sure the veterans like what you've done because they never complained to me, always took care of him. They needed money, they got it, whatever they needed. You took care of them, so that's a good thing. Never that I once hear anything bad about you. And I hope the guy taking your place, well, maybe a little bit for the wife, but that don't count. But I hope the next guy coming in is just half as good as you are. And we would have never any problem. Okay, so this is an official city citation. You know that one. Being resolved, the City Council hereby extend its commendation, Raymond Hey, Director of Veterans and Recognition for Retirement, a 22-years dedicated service for the city of Fall River. Be it further resolved, that Fall River City Council extend best wishes of continued success, and this resolution be entered in the records of the City Council. Well, the only thing I can tell you, Ray, you haven't voted on this yet. If it don't go true, somebody probably ends up with a broken leg because I'm going to see nine votes for this thing for you because you're a good guy. Congratulations. And the only other thing I could say, you, me, and Bill. Now, we've been fishing. You ever heard of Lincoln Lake up in Lincoln?
No.
About Foxville's lake up in...
That's where your grandma lived.
Yeah, we went fishing there. All we do is get the bait. I guess you go to the bank and get the pig. But I'm looking forward to you. I know your wife's still got several years to work, and I'm looking forward to a couple times a month if I can get a note from my wife to go. Do you need a note on your way to go with me?
will say that this council, that we have a lot of work to do tonight, and we have a
No.
No? Okay, this is yours?
lot of stuff to go through in addition to an executive session with our chief. We're
I do go with her, but not you.
Oh, well, hey, listen, he's worse than I am.
Mr. Hay, if you want to say a few words, it'd be great. going to have Ms. Ferrera come first, followed by our police chief second, because we do
Well, thank you, Counselor, and Mr. President. And, Counselors, it's a pleasure to have worked
have Mr. Davis who supplied the report. So we're going to have him come so we can be
for the city of Fall River. And I'd like to thank the citizens, the residents of Fall
dismissed and drive back to where he comes from. Questions for traffic that begin on
River for allowing me to serve them for 22 years, both where you are sitting. Very difficult
page 233. 233 in your budget books. Ms. Ferrera, if you want to give a brief overview of
job, I know. I've been on a lot of fight before votes in my time, and also as the veterans'
your department and how things are going and what you need from us.
Thank you. The Traffic and Parking Division, as you all know, Counselors, is responsible
agent. So both were very rewarding, and I very much enjoyed it. So I'd like to thank you so much for everything. And I did practice, and I know how to double down on a soft 18.
for issuing of parking tickets, erecting signs such as handicap stop signs, loading zone
Thank you very much.
signs as needed through the traffic board that it's approved. We process everything
Thank you, Mr. Hay.
Thank you.
in our office. We have two clerks who do, who enter the tickets post-payments that are paid in the computer and take calls. Due to COVID-19, we've become a department where we give as much information as we can. Due to the registry of motor vehicles being what's closed and only appointments only, we made sure that they had the right information for the registry. We helped them out, you know, where to go on the website. So we kind of became an informational center, especially with EZ passes, which they didn't know. We came up with a number. We assisted them by giving them that number to make it easier for them so that they could go to the registry and renew their license or their registration. So that was really helpful, getting, you know, as much information as we could to give to the public. We have two maintenance crew that does all the striping. They do all the signs that have to go up, clean up the city with, you know, faded signs. And then we have, right now, six parking control officers. And as you know, we hired the sixth one due to the kiosks that are going up. It's very helpful to have an extra PCO to concentrate on those, teaching people how to use it so that there's no issues with the kiosks.
Constancy two, Counselor Dionne.
Good evening. So how do you feel the transition to the kiosks is working out?
It's really working out really well. I find that, I mean, we've had kiosks in the garage, but it's basically used by jurists that are going to the jury. So the ones that we have out on the streets, which we have one on Sullivan Drive, and we have two at PW Square, which is behind the post office. You know, at first, people were a little confused. I mean, I was out there for a couple of days, but then when we hired the new PCO, he was able to be there and help them. So you saw people using more quarters and dollar bills. But in the last two weeks, I've seen a rise on credit cards. So they're much more comfortable inserting the credit card, getting their ticket, putting in their vehicle. It's going really well.
So moving forward, we would be expanding that service to other areas?
Oh, most definitely. I know that it's in the budget. Some monies that is going to help me purchase at least 43 to 45 more kiosks.
42.
We've allocated the locations where we're going to put them, where it's busy areas. And then the meters that we're going to be removing, we're going to put it on those streets that are going to stay with meters. So we're also updating, we're getting rid of all the meters that are cranky. We're getting rid of all of those. So everything will be digital as well as kiosks.
So I would think in the long run, even though there's an initial investment, that the return on the investment is going to be helpful to the city in terms of extra revenues, et cetera, especially via department?
Well, and I think the key is people that, because it's just not residents from Fall River, it's people from New Bedford, from Somerset, from the Cape that come down to the city. And we want to make sure that we have kiosks that is very easy, that they can use it, you know, put the paperwork on their dashboard and do their thing. And with the meters, you have to come out every two hours, so it becomes a little bit more of a hassle. So we also want to provide that service to everyone that comes into our city.
So welcome, Fall River, to the 21st century.
Finally.
Finally. So my last question basically is, in terms of the Third Street parking garage, are we any closer to that top level being opened?
Yes. Tammy and Josh Bernato have been working with the brackets. They had to be, the brackets had to be made, and then they're going to be installed. Once the brackets are installed, they're going to do the cable wiring. The engineer will go and check everything, and if everything is fine, I'll be able to open the 56 spots that was given to me. So we're thinking about in a month to two months.
Excellent, excellent. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Constancy eight, Counselor Ferrera.
The only question I have, Laura, when are you going to start striping again? I know we don't stripe in the winter. Have you started?
We started certain areas. We did meet, I did meet with the two maintenance crew today, and tomorrow we're going to start around the building. Hopefully, start from here and just work ourselves out. But we already started like on Bay Street and a couple of crosswalks that haven't been done in a while. So naturally, the streets that are going to be worked on, like Stafford Road, New Boston Road, any road that's going to be constructed, we're not touching because it'll have thermoplastic once that street is done.
The thermoplastic's better.
Oh, yes.
Last walk.
Last three to five years.
Yeah.
Depending on our snow during the winter, but it is better.
And I do like the kiosks. I think that that's good. I think John Mitchell was on the council with me when we went to a convention, and Joe Doran was our clerk, and we got those kiosks, and we brought that information back to the city. They didn't want to have anything to do with it. I can't even remember. That was in the early 90s. So I'm glad to see that we finally got that done. The only concern that I have is sometimes when people call me, they want a stop sign here or a stop sign there because of accidents and traffic. When I hear, there hasn't been enough accidents. How many is enough? Like, that concerns me when I have to say, well, traffic board, it was, there's not enough accidents there. I know we had a lot of problems with the lights at Eastern Avenue in Bedford, and Chief Cardoza finally figured that out. It's not perfect. I think that they need the same cutouts, but that's not us. That's with the state. But other than that, I like the fact that your parking control offices take photographs. So when people say, no, I don't deserve this ticket, I wasn't there, that they have the photograph, I think that that's good for you. So, and that's an initiative I know you started, and I want to compliment you on that because that tends to work. Thank you so much. I have no further questions.
Thank you. I want to just urge our colleagues tonight. We have a very long night ahead of us. So I need our questions to be direct, budget-related questions at this point. We have all of our public safety before us. We have all of community maintenance, cemeteries, parks, trees, engineering, solid waste, streets and highways, snow removal, traffic. We have a very long meeting ahead, so I'm going to be interrupting Counselors tonight. I'm just letting everybody know now, if the questions that we're asking during our budget deliberations are not budget-related questions. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
I wonder if you said that right before I started talking.
No coincidence.
It's interesting if there's a correlation there. One thing I've been looking at, not just in your department, and your department actually is not very high, but the uniform allowances. Mrs. Sahadi, I'm just curious because, you know, how we were talking about the importance of the priorities of all our expenses, you know, in every budget. And some budgets are higher than others in uniform allowances. Is there a situation, like, how do we know exactly how much we spend from department to department, like, added up completely, and what we spend in uniform allowances?
I don't right off the top of my head. I can certainly figure that out. The reason some of them are different are they're being paid out of different unions. So in this particular union, it's the ASME union, they receive $600 annually for those that are out on the street.
So that's a contractually mandatory expense. It's not something that we can really budge on?
It was negotiated. That's correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I honestly, as far as traffic goes, I think that you're on the right track here. My only concern would be the electricity costs at $34,000 increasing. Is there, I think there's a little bit of a reason on the side, but could you explain?
Sure. So the electric bill, it's only for the traffic lights, which is the red and yellow. So with the LED lights, it has gone down quite a bit. So based on what I've been paying and what I paid last fiscal year, I don't need the $35,000, because I always have a balance of $2,000. Like, right now, I'm going to have a balance of like $1,500 left. So to put $35,000 where I'm not going to use it, I can do well with what I projected.
Have you seen an increase, or do you anticipate an increase in revenues in your department due to the changes with the kiosks?
Well, most definitely we will because everything is, like the courthouse, jurors are starting to come up. We've had a lot of phone calls for people to park in the garages, so my numbers have gone up as well. So we will see an increase. You know, we did start the new fees. The only thing we haven't done is the meters yet because I wanted to have the kiosks so that we can show everyone, listen, we did go up on the meters, but we also introduced a new kiosk. So that's the only thing I haven't done as of yet. But we've done the $25,000, and that's going really well as well. So I think the year to come, FY 2022, I think you will see a difference in revenue.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor, if I just may, when we're making some comparisons, remember the pandemic year. So we have, she will not make her budget this coming year, meaning fiscal '21, but the traffic department is showing a slight increase in departmental revenue for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Excuse me. So the vacancy position, that has been filled, correct?
Correct.
All right. And I know it's not a large amount of money, but I know the individual, and I know he's worked for the city for many years. Is there a reason why the longevity has been left blank? Was this produced before his hiring? Is that why?
Yes, it was. He hadn't, he had not been hired yet, so the longevity is probably not on there.
For the vacant position?
Yes.
Set is correct.
Okay.
Because at the time this was developed, remember, we're developing this budget in January through, and it goes to print sometime in April. So this was still a vacant position at that time.
Okay, just for clarification, thank you. Put that I yield.
Thank you. We're going to shift. No further questions. Constancy six, seven, Counselor Pelletier, seven, seven.
Seven, long time ago.
Q, yeah.
I got to tell you, the Plymouth stuff is just fast. You learn fast how to use that machine. $3 for two hours. Is that what we got in Fall River?
No, no, no. That's the kiosk in the garage. So the kiosks outside is...
Yeah, yeah, I use the kiosks.
Right.
The whole thing, I put in $5 in, they don't give you a change.
No, it does not.
Okay. And the other thing, you talk about revenues. You got the sign, I know we argued a little bit about here the corner and here the corner. They're all over the city of Fall River. And, you know, the fine is what, 15 bucks, 20 bucks?
25.
25. I think we're wasting our time. I think you're wasting your time putting signs up. But it should be tow zone, and you get towed. You get one, you get towed in the neighborhood, nobody's going to do it again. So I don't know if it's something you can look at, and you can get more than $25. You probably get 50 bucks, and then if you get towed, you're going to pay a buck, a buck and a half to move it. And you remember many years ago, the fire chief had complained down the north end, and it's the same thing there. I think if you change and you put tow zone, do we have any tow zone in Fall River?
The only problem with no parking here the corner, it is a Massachusetts law, so it's not an ordinance from Fall River.
Yeah.
It's all over Massachusetts that you have to be 25 from the corner. So we try to get as many as we can between eight and four. We get calls. The PCOs know the locations that, you know, need to tag for that.
You know, the bus driver doesn't pick up the kid a couple of days, and that's it. I don't know if you addressed the one I'm talking about. You're here, you're getting towed. That's got a lot of teeth to it, and you can make a little extra money. With that, think about it. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. No further questions from Mrs. Ferrera. Thank you so much for coming and for your service. We're going to ask that this council take item three out of order for Mr. Davis to come down with our...
Motion made, second.
...to take the items out of order made by Counselor Lee, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion, hearing not. All those in favor? I oppose. The ayes have it. Item three, the four police departments audit from the Edward Davis Company. It was referred on May 25, 2021. Counselors, Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Just when they're all done, I'd like to ask a question.
Sure, yep, of course. I'll acknowledge you first. Chief, welcome.
Good evening, Counselors.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, sir.
Sir, Mrs. Davis on Fox News last, yesterday. Not saying that I watch Fox News, but I was watching the Fox Business News Channel. He was a contributor. So, welcome to our Forward City Council meeting, and thank you for the report that you provided. If you could please provide this council in short summary what went into your report, what you were tasked to do, and what a brief outcome of it is for those who are at home and who unfortunately don't have your presentation package.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President, and then good evening to members of the council. I'd like to thank Mayor Coogan and Chief Cardoza for having us come in and take a look at the police department as Chief Cardoza starts his responsibilities here. It's always a good idea to take a step back, and the mayor suggested that we might be able to talk to the chief about some of the issues that he was identifying as difficult for him to deal with as he manages the department. And so we use that. I'm here with my colleague, Bill Taylor, who's part of my staff. He's also a former police chief in Lowell, Massachusetts. So we have a great team. It consists of myself and Bill, two attorneys, who were both legal counselors for police departments in Massachusetts, as well as a union negotiator for the city of Boston. And after we spoke to the chief, we came up with some issues that historically have been problematic, especially in regard to the budget. And so we began to talk about that and drill down into those issues. So some of those issues I can go over, but for the sake of time, they relate to different operations in the department that are causing an extensive amount of compensatory time. And comp time is a bit of a bear in police departments across this Commonwealth, right? It started as sort of an unofficial way, and Bill and I both operated in this system, where detectives who were highly motivated to solve crimes or to work on cases, and there was no overtime available, would basically come in and work on their own time with this idea that we may get some time off down the road in replacement of that. So we never thought that it would become a liability, a financial liability against the city. But over the years, as a result of court cases and budget reviews by, especially in cities that found themselves in budgetary problems, it was recognized that comp time is actually a full financial fiscal liability to the community. And over the years, as is the nature of police union negotiations, and we've been involved with them for at least 25 years now, we find that when a city has money to negotiate a contract, they can give the union money during the negotiations. But a lot of times, cities, especially gateway cities that have trouble with the budgets, won't have the money to settle up with the union according or in line with what the expectations are. And so what happens is, there are certain management rights that are negotiated in '86. You build on that. In 1992, all of a sudden, those clauses tend to come together, creating a system that is... It started as sort of an unofficial way, and Bill and I both operated in this system, where detectives who were highly motivated to solve crimes or to work on cases, and there was no overtime available, would basically come in and work on their own time with this idea that we may get some time off down the road in replacement of that. So we never thought that it would become a liability, a financial liability against the city. But over the years, as a result of court cases and budget reviews by, especially in cities that found themselves in budgetary problems, it was recognized that comp time is actually a full financial fiscal liability to the community. And over the years, as is the nature of police union negotiations, and we've been involved with them for at least 25 years now, we find that when a city has money to negotiate a contract, they can give the union money during the negotiations. But a lot of times, cities, especially gateway cities that have trouble with the budgets, won't have the money to settle up with the union according or in line with what the expectations are. And so what happens is, there are certain management rights that are negotiated in 1986. You build on that in 1992, all of a sudden those clauses tend to come together, creating a system that is legalistic and difficult to get your hands around, right? So we've identified a few of those things, and I can run down the list if you'd like, that some were consistent with practices in other parts of Massachusetts, some were very charitable to the union members. And we looked at those, we looked at whether or not the clause was a contractual arrangement, whether it was a past practice, or whether it was something that was just the result of a memorandum that went out at the end of a particular administration and could be changed easily. So we quantified those issues and put a list together of things that we felt that the city should look closely at to get some of the budgetary problems under control. And I think the single most important thing that we recommend here is allowing the chief financial officer to see the comp time liability every month, so that it doesn't become a problem in that, what we found was the FLSA rules and regulations, there were amounts of money way above what the FLSA mandates as the top amount of comp time that someone can accrue. So we pointed that out, but we really believe that by changing the reporting system so that the city had visibility and transparency on what exactly was going on in the department. You have your budget, you have your overtime budget, and you have this other liability called comp time that really should be part of the whole system so that it can be monitored and controlled properly. I'll wrap it up without going through each individual thing, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. You all have the report, I'm happy to talk about the individual issues. But I'll wrap it up by saying that the Fall River Police Department is an accredited police department, and that is a special achievement that police departments have. There aren't very many of them around the country. So over the years, this police department has professionalized their policies and procedures. I was in the police station that was built in the 1990s in comparison to other police departments in the Commonwealth, it's a very well-appointed and appropriate workplace, not only for the police, but also for citizens that are entering into the criminal justice system, that get arrested, that have to be questioned or processed. And when you combine the policies and procedures and the physical environment of the department, you have a very good police department here. We weren't asked to do an operational review of this police department. That is a huge undertaking that takes nine months to a year, and is very much outside the scope of what we were asked to do by Mayor Coogan. And so I just want to wrap up by saying that it's been a very distinct pleasure working with Chief Cardoza, and his commitment to the community is clear. His commitment to not necessarily maintaining the status quo, moving into a responsive department that keeps the city and the budget particularly uppermost in his mind is something that I think is well-suited for the city. So I thank you for your attention, and I'm happy to talk about any particulars.
Thank you so much. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lowly.
First want to thank you for coming down from, all the way up from Boston, you know, to join us tonight and to do our thing here. And Chief, I actually agree a lot with what you said about Chief Cardoza, I think he's done a great job, in my opinion, and it was important for me to meet with him, especially last year when there was a lot of demonstrations going out in the street and a lot of worry as to what was going to happen. So I think he handled himself very well, and I just want to give him that credit at this time.
Thank you.
As far as the report goes, though, I don't want to assume that I know how to do anyone else's job whenever they sit down at the stable, but I have to ask, the in-training, the part I believe is in section, section three, in-service instructors. Could you elaborate as to what goes, what training that is, or what instruction that is, and what consists of that?
Sure, I'll let Bill drill down into that, he conducted that analysis.
Thank you very much.
And let me just please preface with the fact that I wanted to, I need to understand the quality and the measurement as to how you are, after you do this training, what do you measure to say, hey, we're executing these training, this training in, you know, in-service, or in the streets, or wherever we are, you know, that we're doing the service?
So every year, every full-time or even part-time police officer in Massachusetts is obligated to undergo a certain number of hours in terms of in-service training. Currently, it's falling, and I think the new police reform bill in the state increases upon that, and specifically dedicates certain categories of training in the years to come. And typically, Fall River, much like other police department that we're familiar with, uses on-duty personnel and compensates them either with overtime, and that's usually the preferred model because that is, you know, you're not paying, you're not putting the payment off to the future, or with compensation time. And it's much more cost-effective for you to pay one individual extra compensation to train people as they come in for in-service. And what typically, I think we recommended in this, is that when a person comes in for in-service training, that they come in on their regular duty schedule, and then they not, for the training, not get compensated with compensation time. You pay the trainers, you have the officers come in either on their duty shift or reassign them to a different shift.
And there's a wide range of training that we're talking about here, correct?
Well, that's just the in-service training, as you can imagine, police departments go through firearms, tasers, all kinds of different.
And it's done in the same manner that's described here, where it's comp time and overtime?
Some of it is, and some of it is done in different categories, yeah.
Okay, all right. And again, when you do such training, the purpose obviously is to increase the quality of policing in the streets. So at what point do you use to measure that the training is actually working with? What is the measurement tool? Where do you see the results of this training?
If I may, Counselor, so some of the classes that they are required to go through have a exam or a test, if you will, at the end, as well as some of them, like CPR and first aid, they actually have to, in front of the instructor, if you will, have to do a demonstration to ensure that they're, you know, they're doing it correctly. So some of them have a checks and balances built in place, and some do not.
And sometimes when I hear, when I see something that says cost-effective, my first thought as a city council, you know, looking out for the finances of the city, that's a good thing, but when we're talking about policing, we're talking about public safety, even in education, sometimes a cost-saving measure may decrease in quality of service. So you would know better than me, and that's why I say I don't assume I know your job better than you. Is this level of training as good of quality as if it wasn't used for, you know, in-service or overtime or anything like that?
Yeah, you know, Counsel, it's a very good question, and our advice would be to maintain the same level, the same quality of training, but just manipulate the scheduling process so that it's the most effective, which is what other police departments do in the Commonwealth. The other thing you should know is that there appears to be a move to increase funding for training for police officers from the federal side. So you may see grants coming down the pipe that would offset some of these costs, especially for the increased hours. When the state mandates increased training, it's an unfunded mandate if they don't, you know, help you in the financial side of it. So it's just something to keep in mind.
My last piece tonight, I didn't have anything until you said that Fall River was an accredited police station, which is rare, and I just needed to know a couple of things. The name of the accrediting body?
It's called the.
CLEA.
CLEA, right, the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies.
And again, I'd like to just know the measurement of, you know, what's the difference between an accredited police station and a non-accredited? What does the city get out of that?
I can speak to that, actually, because I was never able to get the local police department accredited, even though I tried for 10 years. And the reason for that is because they have very high standards. The policies and procedures were all put into place, and those were all consistent with CLEA standards, but our police department was not up to the task as far as the physical environment. There were stairways where prisoners had to be brought down, there were cell blocks that had to be completely, basically, we would have had to have built a new police department to get the CLEA standards. This city has invested in that, the police department has invested in the change of the policies and procedures, so as a city, you should be proud of it.
Okay, thank you, I yield, thank you very much.
Counselor, thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
One of the things that really stuck out in my mind reading this report, and I kind of scratched it all up, but the FLSA caps the hours at 480 hours, but we don't have that cap here. And it said that as of June 30th, 2020, not even this year, but last year, it was comp time total, if we had to pay everybody comp time on June 30th of 2020, it would cost the city $3.2 million. And if we had done it at the 480 hours maximum, the payout would be $1.5 million. So how do we change the comp time now that it's been negotiated with the union? How do you do that? And some of the other things that I look at, some of the controls that are in, and I understand, I believe you said something about when you're training, there's one person that you're going to pay to train, it was very similar to, for example, the state is doing a training on excessive force, and the state was charging police departments $175 per person to train. And I think Chief Cardoza, rather than have officers at home for four hours on a video, which I don't know how you monitor that, and pay 175, he got a former chief who has a company, who, you know, who was able to do it for $100 per person and do it live. And I think you get more out of that, and there's more exchange for an officer to say, I don't understand this or that. But, you know, some of the things, for example, court time hours. I mean, I worked at the DA's office prior to retiring, and, you know, an ADA will see four officers' names, the sergeant on the scene, or the lieutenant on the scene, and they'll summons everybody in. And then the day of court, or the day before, you find out that that attorney is kicking the case down the road, or the ADA doesn't have the information, doesn't have a witness, and they're going to kick it down. But now I've had four officers that show up at court, only to be told, you're not needed today, and minimum, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was four hours minimum of comp time or overtime. What do we do to close that gap up a little?
If I may, Counselor, I've had an extensive conversation with District Attorney Tom Quinn on this particular issue as it relates to court time, and he's Kyle McPherson, he was a supervisor at the district court, and Zach Mercer, as well as a supervisor, are going to specifically scrutinize Fall River PD's subpoenas as it relates to officers, to make sure that if the ADA doesn't need someone to testify, that person's not called in, and that the case is actually going to go forward the day that they're, the day that they're necessary for them to be at court. But just to go back to the first part that you talked about, I took Commissioner Davis's report, and I shared it with Clifford and Kenny, who does our negotiations, I can't get into the specifics of that, but they've created a chart, if you will, on each and every issue that the commissioner's company looked at, and they have made recommendations as to whether or not it's a bargainable issue or something that I can implement without bargaining. So we have that, and obviously, we're going to put that to good use.
I mean, I think that would be important at this point. I think, I've been around here for quite a while, and I think that at times when the city didn't have the money, I remember when, you know, we were giving 3% raises, and we were like to 1%, 1.5, they didn't have the dollar amount, so you did this comp time. But when we have an officer who retires out, and I hate to say it, but a lot of police officers are looking at leaving and doing something else because of all the finger-pointing for police officers, and no good police officer wants to work with a bad police officer, I can tell you that. But, I mean, we have people who are, they're going to get comp time for a year, a year and a half, two years, and because of the contract, you can't fill that position because that money, how do we, how do we work on that? I don't think it's something.
Well, I'd like to say one thing, I think it's important for me to say this, that nobody did anything wrong.
No, they didn't.
As it relates to the officers, the commissioner referenced that the union did their due diligence and was able to get these things into the collective bargaining agreement. So they work very hard, they deserve everything that they get, but we also realize as administrators that we need to rein this in. So I'm going to work very closely with Jamie Kenny and John Clifford, and hopefully, the issues that they believe that we absolutely have to bargain, we'll be able to bargain some of that stuff away as it relates to comp time.
I mean, part of it, if you have a detective who really is looking at a case, the case is hot, you want to get the witnesses, you want to make sure you get out there and have people who are going to come and are going to testify, you can't wait till next week to do it. You can't wait for two weeks. You got to go out there now and get the people and hook them in and.
One thing the commissioner brought up to me, and it keeps echoing in my head as I talk about the comp time issue, is that it's really like a credit card. It's either pay me now or pay me later. You can't look at comp time as taking the place of overtime. So, you know, there's going to come a point in time where we may need more in our overtime budget to continue to function properly.
And I think that one of the ideas that the chiefs mentioned was to have a list of comp time, what are the hours and what are the amount of comp time. I think that that's important to have as well for us to know, but at the same time, you give credit to an officer who wants to work the extra to get the job done, and that's one of the reasons why we do get accredited. And when you do Taser training, when you do rifle training, you know, when you go out to the shooting range, some of those trainings are by law that we have to do, so it's not like we don't have to do this, it's by law. It's almost like a social worker that has to get so many CEOs every year. But I hope that you work with Clifford and get that done, or even maybe come up with something that if somebody's out, and they have a bunch of comp time, and they've left the employment, or they've retired out, that there's a way to put somebody in and not hold that position. I think we had that with one of the captains who retires out but has all this comp time, but you need that other captain in there. I think it was wise not to hire another deputy chief, but to hire a captain, less pay, and it's the position you need. And I honestly, Chief, I'm very excited when you were chosen to be chief, I was very excited because I've had the opportunity to work with you through my job, and with Mariotti, who's sitting up here, Maretti, great, great team and great officers that I have worked with. And I have faith that you will be able to look at what is the best thing that you can do for your department, but like my colleague, Counselor Lee, said, I know a little bit about what you do as a police officer, I don't know what you do as a chief and what you have to do. And I think that we chose you to be a chief because we had faith in you that you would handle this department to the best of your ability. So this is a big nut to crack with this comp time.
It is.
So, and I agree, the unions did their job, but my hopes for safety in our community and that our officers are all treated with respect. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon.
Good evening, thank you for joining us. Basically, my question, I have two or three questions here, all in relation to the FLSA. And for anybody who doesn't realize what that means when we're talking about it, it's Fair Labor Standard Act compliance, just so people have an idea. There's two categories, there's exempt and non-exempt employees. The non-exempt does not apply to FLSA, correct?
The.
If you're a non-exempt, if you're a.
If you're an exempt employee, it doesn't apply.
Exempt employee.
Right.
Can you explain to us what the two are and how, what differentiates them?
I'll give it a shot, Bill might be able to fill in the spaces, but an exempt employee is someone with a high administrative assignment, like a deputy chief. So deputy chiefs are exempt from FLSA because they're salaried employees, and they have a certain amount of time that they have to work every week as part of their salary, which is actually a little over 40 hours, I think it's 43 hours a week. So they, under the federal law, they don't fall into that 480-hour category. So. So there are certain ways to deal with that, and the attorneys have taken a look at that.
Now, in this report, you mentioned that in terms of FLSA, we're basically almost a million and a half dollars over the limit. And FLSA supersedes all collective bargaining agreements. So I guess, number one, we shouldn't be in this situation. However, it is what it is. It's not something that happened yesterday. This has happened over a long period of time. How do you handle that when you're outside of where you're supposed to be? I mean, you're already there. How do you reel that back in? I mean, I have to assume that people are entitled to it, but yet, at the same time, theoretically, they're not. So it's kind of a double-edged sword.
Well, if someone were to file as an unfair practice, that would force the city into paying that amount of money. But what happens in practice is that people who like to be able to accrue more and more don't want to make that happen. So they seem to be satisfied with the status quo. And the way you get it under control is you, you know, frankly, you bite the bullet and pay what you have to pay, which is required by law, but then you stop the bleeding. And by the policies that the chief has talked about, by the follow-up to our report that the attorneys have done, you can rein this in very quickly and very effectively, so this never happens again. But the biggest issue is the transparency. Getting those reports to the chief financial officer, and the chief financial officer can give you a report that says, we spent a lot of money last year, but there was a big demonstration, and that's the reason we spent it. So you can say whether or not that's a good idea. On the other hand, you know, if there are administrative reasons for a comp time building up, you can see that too and say, do we have the flexibility to change that practice with the union? Either through main table bargaining, impact bargaining, or just a direct order.
Now, do you think it's fair to say that we live in a day and age now where people would actually prefer comp time over overtime pay?
Yes, because they know, well, it's hard for me to ascribe reasons, but I can tell you this, that if someone is looking at a big payout at the end of their career, that's a benefit. So that's really what you have at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President.
Thank you. Thank you for putting this together and the work that went into this. Chief, I have just one question, and I think you touched on it a little bit earlier. The city spends a lot of money on studies, reports, investigations, and lots of times, they master plans, and they sit on shelves, and we may or may not do anything with them. You've had this report, I believe, since mid-May? And what did you say you have done with this so far?
I am having trouble hearing you. Did you say the investigations overtime account? Is that what you're referring to?
No, I said the city spends a lot of money on studies and reports and audits, things of this nature, and lots of times, they sit on a shelf. What have you done with this report so far?
So, like I said earlier, I have had Zoom conferences, if you will, with Jamie Kenny, and shared the report with her, and asked her, and worked with her to put together a document that I have here with me tonight, but I certainly can't.
I understand.
Regarding CBA stuff, so I could tell you it's very comprehensive. It lays out what she believes has to be either implemented, that I can go ahead and implement, some of those things I've already done. There are some stuff that she believes I would have to at least impact bargain, and then there are issues that she believes would have to take place at the main bargaining table.
What was the middle one again? I'm sorry. Some things you could implement just on your own?
Implementation. Excuse me?
What was the second one you said?
So you have main bargaining, you have implementation, and then you have impact bargaining.
And that's all put together for you already?
I'm sorry?
That's all put together. Is this working?
It's me. Counselor, it's me. I have bad hearing. I apologize.
That's all put together for you already. And I understand that you can't share it because it's part of bargaining. But I'm happy to hear that we are going to use this report and get value out of this report. So that's all, those are the only questions I have.
100% Counselor. I could tell you that this is not, at least in my tenure, let me say this, I think this is going to be a marathon, not a sprint. It may be, maybe the next chief will reap the benefits, but in my tenure, I'm going to continue to work on this.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. In seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Chief, Commissioner, Chief, thank you. The one item I'll touch upon, because I ran into some issues with it during the beginning of COVID, is number nine, the medical supply officer. So it states that the medical supply officer receives four hours per month for inventory ordering of personal protective equipment, PPE, and medical supplies for cruisers. I know we had had a conversation early on in your tenure as chief, that the chief before you, the interim chief, I went by there to look at the medical supplies, and I was told that he didn't have the key. So then I was told that the watch commander didn't have the key, that there was only one captain and an officer that had the key. Other than the four hours that they get of comp time, that one officer that was the medical supply officer, when he's called in, does he get four hours overtime mandatory as well?
I'm not sure. What do you mean by called in? He'll finish his normal tour of duty, and then at least once a month, he's responsible for making sure we have all the PPE that we need, as well as, really, the most important function that he has is going out to every single cruiser, opening up the trunk, making sure that the furbulators are charged, making sure that the appropriate pads are there, whether it's child pads or adult pads, and so on and so forth. All the first aid equipment, lifesaving stuff that they have in the trunk.
Yeah. And again, the reason I ask it is because when I went there, I was told there was a supply closet upstairs. I believe it was in the locker room at the time. I don't know if that's changed. But I couldn't gain access to it, and nobody in the building could. I was told the watch commander had a couple of items in the closet in case a cruiser ran out of something.
That's changed.
That's what I want to know.
We took your advice on that, Counselor. I'll give you credit for that. We have a six-month supply that we don't even touch.
Okay.
It's locked away. It's more than enough to get us through six months if we needed to.
Okay. And thank you for clarifying, because I found that an issue that I went there to see the PPE supplies, and nobody had a key to get into it. And I wasn't going to ask for the medical supply officer to be called in from home just to show me the equipment in the locker room. So thank you for clarifying.
It's a much different process now.
I appreciate that. I do. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadeen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Cardoza, folks, thank you. I'll go to Chief Cardoza, because there's a lot of chiefs at the table. So just in terms of, and you answered this question in some form or manner, but I just want to ask it again. So of the 21 identifiable areas that were reviewed and have recommended changes, some of them, we obviously were fully aware of, we knew were taking place. You had mentioned some of them will require, obviously, some collective bargaining, but others are management rights. So did I hear you correctly that the ones that are managerial rights, we are going to implement those changes, or are there some here that we will not be implementing?
There's a few that they've indicated that I can go ahead and implement. Of those few, there are some changes that I've made or about to make. You know, I think I could talk a little bit about one particular thing. For example, we have to have an ESU team, a SWAT team, and it's necessary that they have training. So if I put all of those folks into, which is a managerial right, if I put them all into the same day-off group, then I don't have a situation where I'm paying someone comp time. I'm simply paying them all overtime.
So I guess, can I just request of the 21 items, if you can send to the council, which ones are considered to be managerial rights versus collective bargaining? And then I guess, which ones we anticipate on attempting to implement and negotiate? And which ones, if there are any of the 21 that you feel you don't agree with either implementing the recommendations that were listed in the report?
Yeah, I'll certainly discuss that with Clifford and Kenny and get you that information.
Perfect. I appreciate that. I yield.
Anything further? Harry, none. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman, for your time. Thank you.
Chief, you can hang tight. We'll have your budget deliberations at this point. Police Department, Police Department, municipal budget?
Chief, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Page 305. 305. Chief, brief update, information. What do we need to know?
Certainly. So I'm just going to start with FY '22 and just kind of give a brief overview of what it was, or what it is, excuse me, that we're asking for. It is regarding salaries, there's a 4.1% increase. We are asking for a slight increase in replacement staff. This particular line item covers cruisers that may be open due to sick calls, vacation, or as we were just talking about, the use of comp time. We also received a small increase of $9,000 we're asking for in the 12-car minimum manpower. The significant increase in the budget comes from overtime investigations. And this is the area that we find ourselves going over consistently. So we spoke with the mayor and the CFO, and they were giving us $100,000 more. This overtime line item is specific for detectives working on violent crime, such as shootings. And then we have a slight increase in court time. I'm getting a lot of feedback from the District Attorney's office that there's going to be a huge, huge, huge amount of trials coming up due to the backlog with COVID. So we asked for a little bit more money as it relates to salaries in that line item as well. If there's, I'm not sure, Counselor President, if you want me to take questions on salaries or just go on to expenses?
You could just keep going with your overview, Chief.
Okay. So as it relates to expenses, there's a 6.2% increase. I've learned that we're expecting electricity costs to be a little bit higher. There's also, we need to replace some cubicles, some shelving, and some carpet. The building is built in 1997 is when we moved in, so there's some areas that need some repairs. There's a sizable, at my request, an increase in training. We touched on this a little bit before. With everything that's going on in the country, I'm really trying to focus on a little bit of a culture change. And what I would like to do is send some folks to train the trainer programs down the road. That will help us in that they'll be certified to teach classes, and I'll no longer have to, or my replacement will no longer have to go out and pay someone to instruct. So we have different types of classes, fingerprint schools, interview schools, police reform, so on and so forth. We're also asking for some active shooter kits to go to the SROs, which is another expense. And Chris, our electrician, has done a great job identifying. We have 60 traffic signal boxes throughout the city, and some of them are extremely antiquated and need to be replaced, so that's also a sizable increase. And we added this year a line item for maintenance to the police patrol boat of $2,500. We used to, we're trying to get, it's one area we've tried to get away from, paying officers that have a little bit of experience in boating to paint the bottom of the boat and give them comp time. So if we're, you know, given that, this in the budget, we'll certainly have somebody, a professional, do that, and that gets us away from the comp time. And then the last thing I'll touch upon is the capital equipment. We asked for five marked cruisers, one unmarked, a better vehicle to, a small and better vehicle to maneuver around the parking lot, to take care of snow. We've had situations where vehicles are hit and struck. Every year, we seem to lose fencing because the plow pushes the snow into the fencing. So we asked for a little Kubota to do that. And then, again, back to Chris, he identified that we have LED lighting in our traffic signals. However, they have a 10-year shelf life, and the last time that they were replaced was 2001. So he would like to, at an expense of $70,000, begin to replace those LED lights in the traffic signals. That's my brief overview, Counselor President, as it relates to FY '22.
Questions? Counselor in seat two, Counselor Dion.
Good evening, Chief. On page 314, it shows yourself and two deputy chiefs. Now, I know in the past that we had three deputy chiefs. That number's been reduced to two. Is that going to stay at that level? Is that your intention?
Yes. So when there were some changes in leadership at the Police Department, Deputy Chief Fattaro decided to begin to take his comp time and retire. So with, the past chief was able to go backwards, I think, as we all know. So that caused a situation where we had three deputy chiefs. We've, it's only been, in my 30 years, one other time that I recall that, and it was for a very short time. So speaking with the mayor and the CFO, we have no intentions of going to three deputy chiefs.
Which is a significant savings in terms of a salary. Page 306, it's other personnel costs, $267,700.
So that is the same explanation that we've given you for all the other departments. We have included an amount in every department for potential increases with negotiations.
Okay. And my last question, and I'm sure Mrs. Sahadi is not going to be surprised.
Just to be clear, that is, that line item, right, Mrs. Sahadi is other personnel costs. That isn't for all departments when it comes to collective bargaining. There are some departments that, there's been some ongoing or discussions that the mayor may have had with specific department heads and promised them an increase. So you've set aside some money in some departments for that. Is that correct?
Yes. If you recall, the very first evening, you asked me to bring back the schedule.
I just wanted to clarify for the council and the community, Mrs. Sahadi, that while we're essentially showing our hand for possible collective bargaining negotiations and future collective bargaining discussions in this fiscal year, there's also some departments that don't abide by that part of collective bargaining that we have allocated and set aside personnel increases for department heads. Just want to make that clear. Counselor, you have the floor.
And those monies are discretionary as opposed to an agreement? Is that a fair statement?
Yes, it is.
Okay. On page 305, overtime special civic events. I know fireworks is a special event that we need overtime for. It's a line item of $89,000. Can you explain what all the civic events are that are in that line item?
I think I could touch on that. I'll try not to miss anything. You have July 4th, you have elections, you have the feasts. I think we also may have used a little bit of that money as well for some of the demonstrations that we had.
And I think some of the parades.
Parades, yeah. It's put aside for those functions.
Now, when you say feasts, is it feasts plural or singular?
I'm not sure, to be quite frank with you. I think it's meant to cover all of them, whatever we do have, or whatever we do cover. Some of the functions that are smaller, we cover with auxiliary police.
Now, any of the smaller feasts and other feasts that happen in this city, do the people running the feasts, is that part of their obligation to pay overtime also? Or does the city accept the, I don't want to call it liability. Well, I guess it is, in a sense, the expense of overtime for all feasts.
So I don't want to say anything that's incorrect. I have not, because of COVID, I have not, as the chief, have not experienced the financial aspect of the feast. So I'm really not sure. Maybe I could defer to the CFO on that.
I believe I know which feast you're speaking of. And as far as I know as well, that particular feast has not been charged for police overtime. If they hire detail, they would be charged for the detail. But the actual overtime of an officer patrolling that particular feast would be the expense of the city.
So in terms of other feasts in the city, do they incur the expense, or does the city incur the expense?
I don't, and again, I don't believe that any of these organizations have paid for city overtime when they are patrolling the particular event.
Would it be correct to say that, I mean, I know there's, you know, a lot of businesses, there's different, whether it be a carnival or whatever, that people are, it's part of, to get the permits, that they have to agree to pay for details to monitor their events, correct? In other situations, apart from the park, from feasts?
Chief, I don't know.
You know, it's been a while since we've had a carnival, but my recollection is that they hire details. Yes, they pay for the details.
So, yes, so they take on the burden of the details as opposed to coming out of the city budget?
That's my recollection of carnivals that have taken place down by the waterfront or up in the flint, I believe. They pay for details.
So the one particular feast is the largest number in that line item. Is that correct? correct? I, I believe we came to like $45,000, $50,000 just for that alone?
I would have to pull some prior years. And last year, as you know, we, there were no, no feasts, but I could go back to prior years and, and pull the actual overtime for civic events or events, not only in the Police Department, but I believe it was in the Facilities Department as well, and give you an analysis of exactly which events we had overtime charged to.
Yeah. I, I would appreciate getting that number. And again, as far as fireworks, as far as any city-sponsored thing, I have no problem, even as a taxpayer, of paying for that overtime and that, you know, that being the burden of the taxpayer. But, you know, depending on the, on the dollar amount associated with a single event that is not a city-sponsored, that's where I have a bit of a, a problem, especially if it's a, if it's a $50,000 number. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor, in seat four, Council Vice President.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the easier questions first. Chief, for the police animals, I notice there's two line items in here for police animals.
Was that the ACO? Are you talking about the canines or the ACO?
Well, on page 308, under police animals, there is a, the projection is reduced.
If, if I can ask you, Counsel, what page do you want, number?
308.
308.
But then I also notice on page 310, there's another category for police animals. It says the exact same thing, almost the exact same thing. Is this in here twice? As well as animal control services? It's the same page in here twice?
So, the animal control service is the, is the services we have, where the police animals are the actual vet bills and dog food and other items.
Yes.
Wait a minute. On animal control services?
No, I think you're, are you referring to page 310? Is it 98.5?
So, 308, page 308, but the second thing down says police animals. On page 310, the fifth one down says police animals. So, Counsel, Counselor, I believe that you received two replacement pages, 307 and 308, for some reason. If you look at the 308 that you're looking at, that column says 2021. So, the link was never, the link was never updated for some reason, and I do apologize, but when we were reviewing the chief's budget, that got passed everybody when they were doing the type checking. The totals are all okay, but what was incorrect on 307 and 308 was the links were from the 21 budget. Okay, so, I don't see police animals on the new one. They are on 310 because we resorted the entire Police Department expenses so that all the same type expenses would be within each other as opposed to being randomly set up on the police budget as well as actually in use. So, the three, page 310 in the budget is correct? That's correct. And page 307? 307 is not correct. Because you can see at the top of those two columns, it says fiscal 21. Yep. And 310 says fiscal 22. So, it was only 307 and 308 where the links did not come through in the finished document. Got it. All right. In that case, under police animals, on this page, and animal control services.
Galveo has brought me up to speed that they're way behind on pairing a handler with, with a, with a particular dog. So, he's in the, the queue, if you will, waiting for that to happen.
So, we don't think we'll see it in this budget?
I'm hoping that we, I'm hoping that we make some progress before the beginning of the school year.
So, have we budgeted for that?
No, I was able to get a source that wants to pay for that dog.
Okay. And, and the vet bills or anything are in here?
One of the things that the canine officers do, they're very, they're very passionate about what they do. They actually hold bake sales and things like that where they, they are able to come up with a little bit of a, a fund of their own that they put aside. So, I'm, I'm comfortable, and some of the veterinarians actually volunteer their time as well. So, I'm comfortable that we're going to be able to absorb that.
So, that, that's great. That's great with the vets, and that's great that we have somebody that would sponsor that comfort dog. I would hate for the handlers to have to have bake sales to get additional funds. I'm sure they, maybe they don't find, maybe they enjoy it, and I'm sure people like to give, but I think that we should budget for it. And then I had one other question. The SROs, you mentioned the active shooter kits. Those will be for the SROs?
Yes. SROs and, depending on how many we're able to obtain, we may put them in some of the frontline cruisers as well.
So, does, does anybody have an active shooter kit yet?
Well, we have, we have things that, to deal with that in the frontline cars, but some of the SROs do not. So, it's something that we recognize and we want to rectify.
Perfect. I think most times you hear about an active shooter, it's in a school, so I would hope that they would be among the first to get them. And then, and under salaries, page 305, Mrs. Sahadi, I know this is through March 31st. Do we have updated numbers through May 31st, at least? We can run unit's reports through today.
I, I ran it today.
What is the question, Counselor? I was wondering what the total is now.
I was, we were regarding salaries, when we ran it this late this afternoon, it was at 99.1%.
Do you have a total?
I don't.
Mrs. Sahadi, could you get that for us?
I can.
And then the other question I have is the overtime, the minimum of 12 cars. I know this is, this comes up a lot. We did overtime for it last year, and it was a bit of a difficult process to get it to happen. Is that happening now?
Yes, it is happening.
We're running 12 cars.
We're, we're, we're maintaining 12 cars. The only time we don't have 12 cars is on last watches, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. The day will shift, and the first watch, we always have 12 cars.
And I think it's important for people to know that, because we hear a lot of times that we need more police officers because we need more cars, but it is in the contract, correct? That's why we have it in here for overtime, that they can go down to 10 cars.
The 12-car minimum, though, we, it's not, that language is not in the contract. It's something that we, we did recently that I instituted.
What, what language is in the contract? They can go down to 10 cars?
I don't think it specifically addresses the minimum manpower in the contract because it's really a managerial right. You know, we've, we've run 10 in the past except Friday and Saturday nights.
So, then why do we need overtime for the 12 cars?
Because we figured out when the, the council and the union were discussing going to 12 cars, we figured out approximately what it would cost.
That was for last year?
Yes.
So, if we're going to...
So, it was $300,000 last year, and now it's, we're asking for $309,000. The number we came up with last year was $325,000.
Right. So, and I agree with that, and, and we had that discussion, but why is it that we have to put in overtime for it? Why can't we, if you're scheduling however many people on shift, why can't we schedule 12 cars?
Because people take comp time. We have to order people in to, to fill the cars, although we, we have identified the need for it. I know, people like to have their time off. It's, it's just necessary.
And I, I agree with that, but there's got to be somewhere in the contract that says you can go down to this many cars.
Yes.
If they're allowed to take overtime or, or comp time or whatever, I'm sorry, comp time or vacation time, whatever they have, you can't just let everybody call help.
Right now, minimum manpower is 12, so they're allowed to take comp time down to 12 cars.
So, then, then why do we need overtime to make it go to 12 cars if in the contract it's down to 12 cars?
Because we, we don't have a lot of manpower right now, Counsel. It's not something I wanted to get into too in-depth, but it's, it's been necessary to, with vacation times, with range, with in-service training, people, these are things that we absolutely have to do. So, we find ourselves in situations where we have to order people in or just put it out for straight overtime to get up to minimum manpower.
I'm going to come back to that. I'm going to look at the, the contract. Did you say that, so you said two things. One was that there wasn't a minimum manpower in the contract, but then you said that there is a minimum manpower and it's 12 cars? I can look it up, it's fine.
Okay.
I just wasn't sure what your final answer was.
Yeah. So, manpower is a, a managerial right. It's up to a chief to, to decide what the city, the community needs for manpower on the street. Ours is 12 cars right now. It used to be 10 cars, and...
When did that change?
Last year. We, FY 21 had a $300,000 line item.
Right. So, that wasn't a line item, it changed, it didn't change in the contract?
No, nothing's changed in the contract. It, it was the council that identified it.
Correct. And I remember, and, and we agreed with it for last year.
The mayor and I talked, discussed it, we agreed, and, and, and there was a, a bit of a financial burden that came with that.
I remember that, and I, I know that we agreed to it, but I would, I thought that we were agreeing to it, so then it would be changed in the contract and not so that we would have to do it, continue to fund it through overtime. That, that was my question. And then I have one other question under the special and civic events, and you, and you might have said this, I apologize if I missed it. So, feast parades, fireworks, however, with COVID, we didn't have a lot of those. So, the, the money that's been spent so far in that line item, what did that go towards? Did that go towards the protests and demonstrations?
I'm not sure exactly how many elections we had. I certainly can check into that, but we spent it on elections. We spent it on, some of it on protests. If you, you want me to refer back to 21, I can see where we're at.
No, it's fine. When Mrs. Sahadi gets us the updated numbers through, you were able to get it through today, Mrs. Sahadi? Oh, yes. I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Hi, just one question. I'm looking at, on page 310, firearm supplies. When you say firearm supplies, what does that entail? The purchase of firearms, pots to fix firearms?
I'm trying to find out. Oh, firearm supplies, no. So, there are different things that we need to, yeah, to, to either fix a firearm. It's not, that's not the ammo line item, if that's what you're asking.
What I'm asking is, is that the purchase of the firearm itself or the pots?
Yeah, we, we also use that line item to purchase OC spray and, and different other things like that as well.
Okay, so the $13,800 in fiscal year 2021, when it was $13,800, then to $957, and then proposed for FY 2022, there's no, no number there. So, are we up to par with what we need firearm-wise?
Yep.
And that's to include the people that we're going to put on?
Yes. We, if you see in the leather apparel, we've ordered a significant amount of leather gear for, in anticipation for new recruits coming on.
Okay. That's the reason I ask, because I know it's very expensive to, to suit an officer. But I was just, I just want a clarification as to what that line item entailed, because I saw that it, there was, it is mentioned OC spray, inner spray, replacement badges, et cetera, but I just wanted to make sure that wasn't including the purchases of new firearms in FY 2022 for the new hires.
Well, fortunately, I think you know this, Counselor, we don't, the city doesn't even have to pay for our firearms. Smith &amp; Wesson has a program with us where they exchange the firearms with us when new versions come out.
Okay. Fantastic. With that, I yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I'm going to ask that we just continue to at least hold the Police Department and Fire Department. I had requested information on June 11th from the administration. I've yet to receive it. The only response I received was your response on June 13th, which asked the administration to get me the information as soon as possible, and it pertained both to the police and fire, and it's now June 22nd, and I haven't received any correspondence or any information that I've requested. So, I'm not prepared to ask any of the, my questions tonight with regards to the police and fire. So, with that, I yield.
Mrs. Sahadi, is there going to be an update on the, or Mr. McCoy, the response to Counselor Kadim's email?
I, I'm sorry, at this particular moment, I'm not 100% sure, actually, I'm not sure at all what was requested on the 11th, and I do apologize if it came to me in an email and I neglected to respond. I need to, I need the request to be resent to us. I don't know that Tim McCoy has anything either.
I apologize also. I'm not aware of an 11th.
So, I'm not sure what the request was.
Six eleven request. If I missed that, Counselor, I apologize also.
Okay, so get back to him by tomorrow if you can? Great. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. It was many years ago, I put in that the police cars carry shotguns. Is that still active?
Yeah, we just recently got away from those. We do carry a version of a shotgun, which is, has a beanbag in it. It's a non-lethal device that we sometimes use, but we've gotten away from shotguns and the preferred method now is rifles. People are much more accurate with them, and they have a, an advantage over the shotguns.
So, they would, well, if they get a bank robbery, more than likely, they pull out whatever they need, right?
Yes, yes. So, we, we carry additional body armor in the trunks. The sergeant's cars have ballistic shields. There's also helmets, ballistic helmets in each of the cruisers. So, thank God it hasn't happened, and let's hope it doesn't, but we're, we're prepared.
Yeah, you're going to have the firepower as well. There's too much firepower out there anyway. Stipends, well, what's up with like stipends you guys give out? Page 306, drug stipends and...
I think you're, if you're referring to the SRO, that, that's got to do with collective bargaining, but we don't pay those, Counselor. The school department absorbs all the, 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 the cost for the SROs.
Yeah, $160,000. All right. Just in general, you come up with the budget and, true budget, and we can subtract, we certainly cannot. And you always hear lately that defund the police and defund the police. Well, I'm certainly against that, that's for sure, but I want to make sure that you got a budget you can work with and that the city of Florida is safe with. I have no problem with the Police Department or the Fire Department. You guys need the help all in good. I don't like to see, because, you know, maybe it's imbalancing, right, or whatever the case may be, that you come in for more money eight months down the road. But, again, if it happens in an emergency, so be it, because you never know what you're going to run up against, like on a parky road and everything else. And, and you put everybody out that, that night, and within three days, I guess, you already had the suspect and everything else. So, I guess that's what we're going to do. I mean, we, we just can't sit down and say, well, we're going to wait to, to get more help, but you took it and you went with it, and that's what we got to do, because we got to, we got to stop this craziness here and for and, and throughout the state, throughout the world, the state of the United States, you know? So, I think you're doing a good job, and...
Thank you.
I always support the Police Department, give you the money that you need in your budget, and I, I think the guys out there do a good job, and it's tough now to get help, especially police, because you never know. They just turn around and just blow you away. It's crazy stuff. You never know.
You're, you're right, Counselor. They're working extremely hard under very difficult circumstances, and to your comment about getting people, we tried to put an academy class of 25 in, and we called down 91 names, 43 people signed that they wanted to take the job, and of that 43, we got down to 25, uh, excuse me, 20. We immediately had to eliminate five people, but what I think it's important to understand is that only out of, out of, we ended up sending 12 people to the academy because the other eight failed the exams, the PT exam. So, we're trying to get up to that 235 number, but we're facing some outside difficulties. So, the reason I bring that up is I just want to recognize that the men and women are working extremely difficult under difficult circumstances, and they're working very hard.
Well, if I was two years younger, I'd go out for it. It's not, it's not going to happen, but good luck with everything. I yield, thank you.
Okay, so, thank you, Counselor. So, so Chief and Mrs. Sahadi, so I'm looking at your budget and looking at the American Recoveries Plan Act of 2021. I am giving my opinion, and that's only that is an opinion, that a lot of these, if any department could be possibly impacted by getting a re, to utilizing these funds would be some public safety departments. If you specifically read, and I'm going to get to my point in a minute, administrative costs associated with the city's COVID-19, now this is an eligible expense, administrative costs associated with the city's COVID-19 Public Health Emergency Assistance Program, including services responding to COVID-19, public health emergency, or its negative economic impacts that are not federally funded. There's also some other areas here where it speaks about programs that mitigate impacts on COVID-19 Public Health Emergency on childcare or welfare, including. To not go into that great detail, when you, when the chief says to us tonight that the overtime for the Police Department is going to go up to over, looks like it's only about $18,000, but it goes up from $406 to $418,000 because of the public health concern that we just had with COVID-19 and the additional backlog in the courts because of Police Department overtime. and the additional backlog in the courts because of police department overtime, why not look at utilizing some of the federal funds, because essentially it's a one-time expense? And if the chief is accurate in what he's saying, which I believe he is, that the overtime for court time won't be so high in future years when they get through the backlog, and we have two years and seventy million dollars to work with. So I guess my question is, why not, I know we have one-time monies used in this budget, four point eight million dollars of it, why wouldn't we use some of the monies we receive from American Recoveries to deal with that? That's, that's one area. Another area that you have in your budget under expenses, your holiday pay. We're looking at one point two million dollars, which is over a hundred thousand dollar increase. You're looking at weekend differential, which is up a little bit from last year, you're at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Plus, we've pretty much stated in this budget, other personnel costs, which may or may not be collective bargaining, or other financial costs, which I don't wanna start using COVID money, or American Recoveries money, when we start talking about salaries. But some of these fixed expenses, I guess my question is, why wouldn't we reallocate some money in this budget, whether it stays with the chief, or goes to another department, because that's a pretty clear eligible expense?
So I, I guess what I'm hearing you say is why not use American ARPA money in this budget? We are, we are using four point seven million dollars in this budget.
No, no, I understand that, under revenues.
Right, but that's gonna support, that revenue was supporting all these expenses, regardless of the department it falls in. We don't need to identify the particular department. Now, if we needed more than the lost revenue calculation, we could go to other components of ARPA and support the budget with those components as well. One in particular is looking at the number of employees that were employed in January, on January 27th, as compared to what is in this current budget, and that calculation is about twenty-seven employees overall, some of which are firefighters, and some of which are policemen, plus their benefits. Those numbers could be utilized for ARPA money calculations as well. In addition, based on some of what you just read to us, those items are as well. The only item that you read to us that I would just caution you on is the COVID. Any public safety use of the COVID money has to be able, we have to be able to prove that more than fifty-one percent of their time was utilized in COVID relief.
Yeah, no, no, I get that, I understand we're using one-time money in this budget. All I'm trying to say is, we don't wanna get into a habit, and I know you know this, of utilizing one-time monies to pay salaries and do all these other things. I'm specifically looking at expenses in the police department's budget that we wanna support, because this city council last year killed the budget on day one, because we wanted more support for our police and fire departments. So I'm just looking at one-time monies, and I'm looking at capital needs that this police department has needed and does need. I'm looking at capital equipment, I mean, we didn't even have an allocation for that last year, and we now have four hundred and ten thousand dollars of capital equipment that we have in this, in this budget, which is on page 311, in the, in the old budget book, or the budget book, so you see what I'm saying? I don't wanna, I don't, it's not that there isn't a trust factor, it's why, why wouldn't we be crystal clear with what our expectations are? I know we put four point eight million dollars of one-time money in, but we don't know, at least I don't know, what we're gonna, how we're gonna spend that money, like what departments are we using it for capital needs, are we using it for salaries? What is our plan?
Well, we're using it, we're using it throughout the budget, as long as it's not being used specifically for debt service or pension. You could say you're using all four point five million for the police department, because it's a source of revenue to balance the entire budget.
But what, but what is the administration's response, what is the administration's plan to use the four point eight million dollars?
To support, to support the budget.
So it's a revenue source, you're just adding it to revenues?
That's correct, so it's a revenue source to support the expenses from each of the departments, excluding debt and pension within the budget. I guess I'm missing your question.
My, my point is, what I would have liked to have seen is you have four point eight million dollars of ARPA money that you are using, and we're just using it as, as a revenue line, which is fine, I get that, but why not have a sleeve in this budget, or a supplemental budget of sorts, that indicates we have four point eight million dollars, we're not using it for salaries, we're not using it for debt? Why not say, we're gonna give our police department four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for their capital needs, or our fire department five hundred thousand dollars for gear, or our EMS a million dollars for a truck? So that's what I'm trying to say. I'm trying to, I'm trying to say, you say we have four point eight million dollars of revenue, right? But we, but you're, you're saying to us, it could be the chief's department, police department, it could be DPW, it could be water.
I don't mean to interrupt you, the ARPA money doesn't require us, the lost revenue calculation category doesn't require us to identify which department, as long as all of the departments in the aggregate total more than, or total, yes, total more than, than the monies being used as the lost revenue calculation.
I get that, but you know, what I'm trying to find is just, I guess, I would have done it differently. I'm looking at some more clarity in terms of what we were gonna do to spend, of the four point eight million dollars, what we're gonna use to spend, that, what we were gonna spend it on, that's all. We don't know, it could be police, it could be fire, it could be, we just don't know. And that's all I'm saying, we just, unless I'm missing a point here, I don't know that we're supplanting four point eight million dollars into the budget for revenues, so we can just balance the budget. We're not, we don't.
That's the purpose of the lost revenue calculation. It's to, to sure up, the federal government is allowing us to sure up the revenue aspect of the budget, so that we can support all of the expenses that we need to operate city government. So yes, it is a source of revenue to support the needs of the departments.
A source of revenue that could possibly set up a structural deficit. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Counsel President, I think that's the other half of the question that I asked last week. What, what revenue are we replacing with the ARPA funds? Where can I find that in the budget? And that's when Mrs. Sahadi gave the very long calculation of how they figure that number out.
Right.
But I was looking for a specific place that those numbers were being plugged in, and there isn't one.
There isn't.
And there is also not a specific place that those funds are being used.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Which, but I, I understand what you're saying, I was looking for the same thing.
Yeah, that's my point. Thank you, Counsel Vice President. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I don't even know what to say at this point. All right, there's also, and if you, if you had mentioned this, I apologize, Counsel President. There's also a line item, community violence intervention programs, is there not? Did I not, I don't know if you recall this from the ARPA meeting, I know there was a lot that wasn't. Community violence intervention programs, I did point that out to the mayor, correct?
That's correct.
What could we use the ARPA funds money for, what, under this one line item alone?
So actually, just today, I was listening to a webinar with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and they spoke about there being some further guidance on that particular item going forward. Actually, I don't even know, I might even have my notes still here from today. I don't know if I can even help you with that. New update will be coming, new crime prevention is going to be eligible for use of the funds. Providence, Rhode Island is trying to expand summer jobs, street efforts, recreational aspects, and gun violence protection. Now, that's just, just individuals speaking at a webinar with regard to where thoughts might come from in terms of what it could be used. The guidance will further, or the frequently asked questions as we get new updates will certainly give us more information on the specifics as to how we can utilize it, but that is correct.
And gun violence was a topic that was brought up.
Sure.
Chief, what do we have for shootings so far this year? Now, I know it's gone up since the last time we have spoken.
We have twenty-five confirmed shootings.
How many did we have the last time we spoke, twenty-one?
I believe it was twenty-one, yes.
We've had four more since the last time you sat before us. I would strongly advise that we look more into it to see if gun violence is a place where we can put this money, because right now we need it more than ever. Twenty-five for all of last year, and we're at twenty-five already, and today's what, June?
Right.
Yeah, twenty-second, thank you. You always have the information, Michelle.
I certainly understand what, what you're saying, and, and I know we haven't done this often over, you know, a number of years, but we can certainly come back to this council with supplemental appropriations, with a source of revenue up through the recap.
Okay, I would like to see on there.
If we can determine a program, or if the chief can put together a program, and we need expenditures for that program, that would be a source of revenue, assuming that when the additional frequently asked questions come up, we can fit it into the eligibility requirements.
Okay, so if it does come out that we can use this for gun violence, I, again, strongly advise that that take a priority, considering where we're at in the city. I know Counsel, Counsel Vice President has indicated locations and how many shootings we've had, and we've all been on top of this with the gun violence.
The chief would certainly work with the administration to put together a program if...
That wasn't my question, the chief, the chief isn't my, my issue here, so I would...
We would need a program in order to fund it.
He already did it.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm a bit confused. The budget presented by the chief includes all of his requests included, including his staffing. So if there are additional costs that need to be incorporated into the budget, we don't have those at the moment, and the chief would need to put something together in order for us to have an appropriation.
Okay, with that, I yield, I yield the floor with that, thank you.
Anything further for the chief? Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
So I just wanna answer Mrs. Sahadi's question. I think what Counselor in seat six is speaking about is talking about gun violence. This council passed a resolution a month ago, maybe, asking for additional funding, specific, targeted towards violence and gangs and shootings. At that time, we were at twenty or twenty-one, that was after the Griffin Park shooting. Counselor in seat one asked specifically what those funds would go to. The resolution said it would be targeted to gang violence and the increase in shootings. The chief and Captain Gorman, I believe, have put together that information based on that resolution. I was hoping we were going executive session tonight, but that resolution did not receive any response from the administration, and that was for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or the amount that the chief needed to put his operation together, which he has done.
If I may, Counselor, I just, I just wanna, for the record, I did send out an email to all the council indicating that. I had a copy of it, how many cameras we have, what the operation would look like, and what it would cost, so I did respond as quickly as I could to that, that request from Counselor in seat one.
So that, that's, I believe, what Counselor, and I understand he's asking if ARPA funds will go to it, but by the time we figure that out, I mean, what, how many shootings will we be at then? We're at twenty-five now, we were at twenty-one when we put the resolution in. So if we wait for ARPA funds, maybe we'll be at thirty. We had twenty-five all of last year, which was probably twenty-five too many, but it's June, and we didn't get an answer from the administration on that resolution whatsoever, and I don't see an additional funds in this budget for it, that the chief could tap into soon for that. It's the same as, as his last years, or pretty much the same as his last years, so, I mean, the council voted, I believe it was unanimous, wasn't it, Counsel President?
I believe it was, yeah.
So are we going into executive session tonight?
Yes, after, at the end of our full council.
Do you have that list of shootings?
Yes, I have everything with me.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Just one more question, Mrs. Sahadi. Has that resolution that was passed by the council been entertained at all? Has there been discussions with the administration?
I believe the chief had a conversation with...
Nothing's come back to us, and she is correct. This is a very hot topic, and there was a resolution filed, there was three, yeah, public safety resolutions filed. Again, how many shootings do we have to be at before the administration sends back a response so we can allocate funds to the police chief?
All I can tell you is, what you have in front of you is the budget that was presented by the police department for consideration by the administration. Each item that was presented is included in your budget document.
Okay, so you don't know that if there's been a conversation taking place upstairs?
Specific to that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCoy, do you happen to know if there was?
I know the chief had a conversation with the mayor, I'm aware of that.
Yep, I made him aware of the, the name of the operation, and just some of the suggestions that we were making. We didn't get into a specific long conversation about it.
Okay, if I, if I may, to that point, were you told, or given a guideline, oh, I'm sorry, a timeframe as to when you would receive these funds?
No.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. I'll, we'll see you later on this evening for executive session. Mr. Pirano, cemeteries, page one nine three.
One nine three.
Thank you, Chief.
Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
I'm assuming you're gonna do a little summary before we start questions, I'm assuming, right?
Again?
Mr. Pirano?
Okay, continue.
All right, so starting with the cemetery salary line items, the biggest changes are moving one of our employees to a permanent workers' comp line.
Which page, John?
One ninety-three.
One nine three.
One nine three.
Moving one of our employees to a permanent workers' comp line item, so we can backfill the position with the laborer bringing our staffing back up to the six laborers that we had in FY, I believe it was twenty. On the expense side, you'll see an increase in our vehicle maintenance. We're spending a lot of money on vehicle maintenance. That covers our trucks, our excavator to dig graves, as well as the commercial lawn mowers. And then I guess the biggest increase here is the request for equipment, replacement capital of fifty thousand dollars. We'll utilize that funding to replace some of our aging equipment, and purchase some items that we need, including trailers. So that's the general idea for the cemeteries.
Mr. Pirano, your plans on the fourteen thousand five hundred dollars of other personnel costs?
I'll defer to Mrs. Sahadi on that.
So that, it's, it's basically the same explanation that we have provided to you. It, it is monies that have been set aside for adjustments in the salaries.
Counselor Lee.
Well, I just, the only question I have is, Mr. Perry, for the most part, but all the conversation about the infrastructure investments, ARPA, things like that, is there anything DCM, DCM related that you see that could be a possibility for an investment in that, in that funding?
As far as the ARPA money?
Yes.
I know that Mrs. Sahadi, the administration, everybody for that matter, is still trying to iron out exactly what the, the limits of that money being spent on is. Yeah, at this point, I don't think there's been any guidance that would lead us to think that we would be able to, to take advantage of that ARPA money for particularly the cemeteries, but I look forward to seeing what that guidance turns out to finally be, and then, and then we could address.
How about DCM overall, just?
Yeah, again, I think the guidance, infrastructure, water sewer, broadband, terrorism, I don't think that leads. I think as far as DBW-wise or streets-wise, I think maybe we, we can work and look for some interesting ways to piggyback off of Mr. Ferlin's windfall with that, and see if we can make some improvements to our streets.
So the second line is address negative economic impacts, right? Would you say that what's going on with our sanitation situation would be a negative economic impact on the city?
The sanitation issue? Yeah, I think we'll get to that in the streets and highways piece, and I know Mrs. Sahadi probably have some information on what our thought process is on, on that end.
All right, I'll, I'll yield, thank you.
Cemeteries, any other questions for, Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
Is any money in his budget for Linda Pereira's damaged headstones and all that? Has that been rectified at all?
So as far as the damaged headstones are concerned, we haven't allocated any funding towards that. It's not necessarily perpetual care item either. Perpetual care covers the cost of taking care of the grounds, as well as maintaining foundations. We've had some preliminary discussions about pursuing CPA funding as a potential source to fix some of those headstones. And over the past couple of years, since I've been there, we've dedicated some in-house staffing time when we're not cutting grass, which is our primary concern in doing funerals, to fixing some of the headstones that we can in-house. I do have a list of that, those repairs that we've done, so if you'd like that, I can forward that over to you.
Do you have any families coming out and ask you what's going on, or if anything's gonna be done?
There are particular requests that we address immediately, absolutely.
Yeah, and you see something come down in the future?
I think there's, there's been some preliminary discussions, again, about CPA funding. We've looked internally and addressed some of the issues that we can, and will continue to do that. As far as money within the operating budget for that expense, I'm not sure.
All right, the only thing I noticed throughout the city in... All right, the only thing I noticed throughout the city, and you do a good job in picking up the trees that a windstorm, we had just a couple, two, three days ago, and next thing I know, it's already picked up. It's already picked up. But I told you when today, they didn't pick up, but you know where it is?
I do.
I didn't call it in, but it's usually mostly the people that call it in if they see it or you guys go by and...
For the tree work?
Yeah.
Most of this stuff does get called in, especially after a storm. We respond to calls from the police department and citizens. They can call the DPW answering service and that gets relayed to either myself or the tree supervisor.
All right, we got a problem on Cottage Street and I brought it up to Mr. Perry's attention several times, but I guess...
Counselor, we're gonna just...
It's a tree.
Cemeteries?
Yes.
Okay.
The tree in the sidewalk. So I don't know if the tree's gone. I know you went down there. Is the tree, the tree still up?
I believe the tree was trimmed. The tree was healthy. Did we address that, Chris? Do you remember?
To be honest, I don't recall Cottage.
I'll look into it tomorrow, Counselor, get your name.
It's put off.
I did meet with the resident.
Somebody got hit about two months ago. So, you know, it's gotta be done.
Okay.
That's all. I appreciate it. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. My apologies. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deanna.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. There's two vacancies in your department. When you say to backfill, are one of those vacancies going to be backfilled or is it...
So one of the names was left off of the worksheet here, so one of those vacancies is filled. The other is replacing the foreman who's on long-term comp.
Okay, very good. So they aren't vacancies, they just...
One is vacancy.
There will be one vacancy if the council approves the request.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, no problem.
That I yield.
Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President.
I just have one question for the other personnel costs. I know on the notes, the chart that you gave us last week, it was 93.13, I think was the increase in the salary and 51.06 was adjustments, the one and a half percent to make it the 14.5. But I'm looking, I had asked the clerk to print out the different salary schedules that we've received because it's been before. So we get a different salary schedule each time. And under cemeteries, just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right one. Which position is it that is getting the... There's an assistant commissioner that's going to 64,300, not to exceed, or in there for, and then there is a commissioner. Is that the commissioner or the assistant commissioner?
I don't have the salary table in front of me this evening, but the increase is for Mr. Perano.
So which, is that the assistant or the...
That would be the commissioner, Counselor. We don't have an assistant commissioner. I'm not sure when that was removed or if we've ever had. I don't particularly remember having an assistant tree commissioner in the time I've been here.
So in this, in the very first salary schedule, we got, we have that commissioner as vacant. Is that when we then, you changed it and you, in the next one? In April?
I don't have it in front of me, Counselor.
Okay.
I can certainly get that answer for you tomorrow.
Who's gonna do the math? One second.
Just a quick point of information, if I can?
Yeah, sure, Counselor. Your point of information?
On page 195, it does say next to Mr. Perano's name, assistant commissioner. Just making a point.
So if you could let us know which position in the salary schedule, I, like I said, we kind of have a different copy in ordinance of every time it was sent to us. It's a little bit different. I know the first time it was sent to us and there were some redlined items and some things moved around. But if you could let us know which one that is so that we can match it up to the budget. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counselor Lee.
Oh, no, no, I just made that point of information. Thank you.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deanna.
Yeah, in regards to the salary schedule, it is a little bit confusing because back in or on April 6th, we had 64 not to exceeds and 18 per contract. And then as of June 21st, we have 59 not to exceeds and 19 per contract. So I don't know why we have fewer and why, even though it only changed by one, we went from 18 to 19 per contract individuals. So there are definitely some discrepancies that I don't understand within these, within these salary schedules. On our original one, it showed the, you know, not to exceed from 2017 and had all kinds of information. And on the newest ones, it only shows now, 7121. This is the not to exceed and the rest of the information is not there. So I think that, you know, it just does make it very confusing and a little difficult to follow. So I believe that's part of the point that Vice President was getting at. With that, I yield.
Counselor Vice President?
So just in relation to that, the, I had asked the clerk today to print out all of the different salary schedules that we've been given since it came down to us and since it's been in front of us. Counselor Deanna and I were looking at them all, but if you would, through you...
I gave you last evening the most updated when we realized that the first column, the 7118, was a 2% increase.
You, is that the one they emailed to us yesterday?
That's correct.
Correct. But what we were trying to do was see the differences between when it was first given to us to now to see what has changed. I know that you had said that column changed.
What was changed was only that column.
Except that there are differences in the amount of positions on the schedule from the first one to the last one. So what we were trying to do was to go through and see if, like, a column was omitted. But if, through you, Mr. President, to the clerk, if you would ask her to make copies for at least the members of the ordinance committee as well as the updated one from last night, I think it's just in our email.
Absolutely.
I yield.
Any further questions for cemeteries? Thank you. Parks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perano.
Thank you.
Have a great evening. I think we, Counselor, no questions for trees either, right? Counselor Pelletier asked the questions on trees. We're good? What are you looking for? Ms. Smith, welcome. In your budget book, you would go to page 198, 198, 198. Bingo. Ms. Smith, welcome back. If you could give us a brief update on your department, what needs you are, what can we do to help you?
In this budget, we have addressed a couple of additional personnel as well as some seasonal workers. So that was a concern that we had with staffing. And also many of the line items have increased some. And we also have particular projects that are in this budget that will be funded through city funding rather than through community development funding, which is something that this council had always also asked that we addressed.
So I know, and a lot of people don't realize this, Ms. Smith, but I think that people should know that your department is the department, I believe, that also takes care of the medians and some of the city-owned property. I have to ask because I feel, I know we've had, well, I don't know if we had a lot of rain, I'm not a meteorologist, but...
They don't even know if we have.
I think that there are some parts of the city that sometimes see often neglect with the tall grass. Is that a manpower issue? I know we're hesitant in what we can and can't do around our, you know, state property on our overpasses and stuff. So can you bring to light on why there may be a delay in getting some areas of the city clean and cut?
Sure. In part, it is a manpower issue. And in, to briefly explain, when we have an event at a particular location, we have, and I believe I have provided this information previous for the council, we have kind of a schedule that we stick to. However, if we're going to have an event at a particular park and it needs to be spruced up, then that, we bypass that again. We try to get to the islands at least every other week, but I think what happens, especially at this time of year, it's not necessarily grass. It's like from the dandelions, the stems of the dandelions, and it just does make it look unkept. So that's a problem that we have. I mean, we do know that we have addressed the, you know, the manpower thing year after year after year and this is something that is not new to this council and we're not going to be able to correct putting it back. We are putting back two people, but this has been something that each year we've lost a man, lost a man, and they haven't been replaced, so.
So how many men or women cut grass on our medians?
We have a total of 10 workers, but that includes the working foreman. We have one working foreman, I mean, three working foremen, one foreman, and I believe six laborers and a mechanic. And that, they maintain 29 parks and playgrounds, median strips, greens, memorials, etc.
Wow, that's a lot of work. That's a lot of work with eight, nine people. If somebody calls out sick, you're struggling.
We do have people sick. We also have to deal with vacations. We have people that have been there for a number of years. So we do have people with four weeks, five weeks, six weeks vacation. I mean, they have personal emergencies, surgeries, whatever, but we try to do the best with what we have.
In the height of, I guess, people retiring and not getting at it or whatever, what was your department at its highest, that you feel that you would be able to have personnel to be able to clean our streets, our medians, our overpasses, all that, at its highest level, before maybe the 9C cuts?
It was definitely before the 9C cuts. We had primarily 16 comfort station attendants that operated. We had 11 laborers. We had six working foremen. We had people, the difference between now and then is we have these, our crew reports to Kennedy Park and disperses from there. Years back, and I think I've said this at previous council meetings, we had crews in every major park that they reported to that park on a daily basis. So that's when we were able to maintain ball fields, line ball fields. They, for example, if the person was in charge, we had a working foreman in charge at Lafayette Park, they would cut Lafayette Park, Quercashan Playground, and the other small, they probably had one major park and three or four of our pocket playgrounds or smaller playgrounds. But they had a working foreman and at least two laborers. And how it would go is North Park would normally be the younger crew. We could bid out of, like, when positions became available, and I'm going back a ways because I've been here for quite some time. So it ended up that the younger guys ended up at North Park because they were the ones who would do the hills and do whatever. So they would be able to bid out when a working foreman position became available internally, they would be able to bid out of where they were to replace that older gentleman that had retired. So you kind of had a cyclical system of the younger guys came in, they went to the more difficult parks. But I mean, when you talk about cutting a park, we're not just cutting a park, we're trimming, we're, you know, we're picking up, you cannot cut grass without first picking up the trash. I mean, I can't tell, we have one man right now, every day, he's assigned, we call it, to the single truck. He has to go around to every basketball court, every playground, everywhere, picking papers. Simple, done, that's what he's doing. We call it the single man job. He's the guy that we have jumping. If we get a phone call, there's something here. But when you put two, and we do our own trash in the parks. So Mondays and Fridays, two of those 10 guys are on a barrel run. So it is very much understaffed, but it's not going to be fixed in one budget season that I can see. And at any point when I do get people back, we are trying to use BCTC, but they have to be over 18 because we operate machinery. And if they don't, if they are children or under 18, and we have to give one of our men to be their supervisor, that just sets it back. It's not gonna, it's not gonna benefit us.
Mrs. Sahadi, is the city council unanimously passed paying for the lights for the baseball fields? Is that in this budget, under electricity?
Baseball field, baseball fencing, repairs and replacement for Kennedy Park and Lafayette Under Capital are in this budget?
So are in the budget?
Counselor President, I believe that conversation had taken place after this was printed. So to answer your question, that isn't reflected here yet.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deanna.
Yeah, just a follow-up question on that. Presently, the electric is in the name of an individual. Is that correct?
What ballpark?
And when it changes over, it's gonna change over to the city of Fall River. So my question is, does it bring it from a residential rate to a business, to a commercial rate? Because if so, the dollar amount that was represented based on what they're paying now wouldn't be what it's going to be if it's a commercial rate that the city is paying.
I believe I had addressed that when we first talked to it, talked about it when I said. The leagues somewhat get a different rate. I don't know what their rate is, but the city pays a different rate than what these leagues had normally paid. I have already transferred those lighting for the youth leagues already because we said it was something that we were going to be able to address immediately. So I did contact them. So those lights have been changed over. I won't be able to tell you based on what they paid or what we're going to pay until I actually see the billing itself.
But it's safe.
But my understanding is that they do pay a different rate. I don't know whether they pay a different rate because some of them are nonprofits, so they may get a different rate from National Grid. I'm not sure. But I do know that, I believe I said when we first took these, put these lights in the league's names, they were like, I pay more at my house than what I'm paying for these lights, but...
So it's reasonable to expect
I believe there may be.
The number to be higher than what originally anticipated?
Yes, and I think when we first talked about it, I did express to the council that we were operating in a deficit right now with the electrical line item. And I believe it was discussed that it would be, that we had it in the overall budget to be able to pay that. So I don't know whether we will see the line item directly increased.
So...
Well, will that be entered? Will the budget be changed to reflect it? And will the electric be a specific line item or how is that going to be handled?
So right now, Counselor, we have one individual in the city that looks at all the electric bills for all of the departments and they allocate the solar credits to all of the departments as they come in. So the electric bills in some instances have been allocated based on these credits to a higher or a lower amount based on the meters that are out there. So you'll see in some departments, the electric bill has gone up because the credits are not the same as they were maybe even in prior year. You've got other departments that have gone down. Mrs. Smith's department, according to the analysis that we're keeping, at least estimating through the end of the year, when the budget was put together again, we're talking about the January, February, March timeframe, looked like the electric bills for the park meters would be about $70,000 and that's what was included in this particular budget. But we look at the electricity as a whole throughout all of the meters that we're paying electric bills for.
So when you say $70,000, that's an annual amount or it's for, or it was for the specific time that you were...
No, it's annual. Annual for the meters that are assigned to the park department.
Yeah, because obviously we're not gonna, we're not gonna use the same amount of electric in the winter as we do in...
That's correct. And as far as these, as far as these couple or three, I'm not sure how many meters we're talking about, they would be added to our billing and those credits would also be allocated as well. So it's not going to be something until we get a year into utilizing those particular meters to know what the average cost is going to be on a softball season or a baseball season.
So essentially, we're not gonna see a line item until 2023?
Right. And even then, it would be merged in with the electricity line item because it would be part of all of the meters that we pay for.
Security lighting is, the line item in this, in this park's budget includes any security lighting. any security lighting as well as any ball field lighting.
Right.
So when you see the line item for electricity, it's all electricity. So next year, we'll say, if, if we're saying we should have a full year of what it costs, so we'll have a better idea, buy that line item, because we'll either run it in a deficit where it's gonna, like, right now, it's, we have to use another line item in our expenses to cover that electrical cost. And then we'll be able to know if we were allotted seventy thousand dollars and it's eighty-five thousand, then we'll kind of know that the fifteen thousand dollars is attributed to most likely increased costs of ball field lighting.
So we would be able to, and we can tell by the meters as well with the analysis that is done. So, um, that analysis is done, as, as I indicated, for all departments by one individual. Um, and so we would then have a better idea as to the cost of electricity, and then would reflect the change in the 23 budget.
And at that point, we'll also know, well, we should know when the bills come in now, uh, what rate we're paying anyways, whether it's a commercial rate, whatever the case may be, and, and what the rate is.
Right.
We would be able actually to compare, say, last August bill of what, we can ask the league for their bill.
Yeah, yeah.
And to this August bill, and see what, you know, if there is a difference as far as I go. But then again, they could be using the lighting more. You'll just be able to see the, the rate that we're charged, though.
Right. Okay, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat six, Councilor Peckham.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch upon what you said, Council President, vehicle repairmen. So when I go to page two hundred, I see maintenance craftsman.
Yes.
That would be that individual, correct?
That's my mechanic, yes.
Okay, you have one.
I have one.
Can you estimate how many vehicles your department has?
Uh, I would say, he maintains mowers as well.
Uh, that was my next question, but if you had to throw, and I know you probably don't have the exact number, but if you...
I would say we probably have eight to, um, at minimum, eight to ten vehicles, including cars and trucks.
I had written this down, uh, so he's also in charge of fixing all your scags, your riding mowers, all the equipment?
Yes, all mine.
One man?
Yes.
And, um...
And he does weed whackers, he's...
Is this something, Mr. Perry, we can look into in the, in the future? And we talk about maintenance all the time and upkeep, so we can keep our equipment longer, and we're not requesting new vehicles every couple of years, or mowers, or riders, and, um, I didn't know that you only had one guy for all of that.
We used to have two. We, one was eliminated, and I have to say that this, this gentleman, he, he does not waste anything. He takes a tractor, he turns it into a snowplow.
I'm sure, and I'm sure he's very good at using spare parts and, um, but again, we talk about maintenance all the time, and when we purchase new vehicles, or we purchase mowers, or we purchase, like you just said, weed whackers, um, we have one man that fixes all of your equipment. Is there something we can look into?
So, so to that point, and to Mrs. Smith's point about this particular individual, um, the, the individual is, is, is really good.
I'm sure he is.
I mean, the work he does, the work he does, uh, i- is amazing, so...
And he'll weld.
So he's a jack-of-all-trades?
Yes.
Yeah, he is a craftsman.
So as Ms. Smith said in her intro, um, we have increased several line items, I believe it was at least nine, uh, and one of those was repair and maintenance. So if you remember, the council was gracious enough to bond for money for us to get vehicles, that, that money was spent across all of DCM's departments. So right now, Ms. Smith probably has the most updated fleet that she's had in a while, but those costs are going to increase, henceforth, the increase in that particular line item. And there's always the ability, and we've done this in the past, where if it's something that that individual, it's too big, it's an issue that, you know, he's going to need help with, we either outsource that to, to a, 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 um, auto place, or we'll bring it in-house to DPW, which we have no problem doing. So we work hand in hand. Another, mechanic would absolutely be, you know, ad, an advantage to the park department, but it's something we can definitely look at.
Yeah, I would find that to be an absolute sufficient remedy to quite a few of your problems.
Sure.
So, uh, if you can think about that in the future, it'd be appreciated.
Yeah, and this individual will, will help work on the cemetery's machines as well, and so does DPW. So we kind of bounce things off each other.
Yeah.
And, and we work together, so, um, but yeah, an increased mechanic would be something I'd love to have in the future if possible.
Okay. With that, I yield, thank you.
Councilor in seat four, Council Vice President.
Thank you. I just had one question. On the summer help, hold on, I went back to cemeteries. The seasonal workers, it says five to ten seasonal workers. Um, it's something that the council has advocated for, um, and it's in this budget. What is the season?
My season that I was, you know, anticipating would have been April to October, which is the, the main grass cutting and, and the busiest season for us. So if it is appropriated in July, we use it from July to October, and then I guess we would reallocate April again, so it would be a three-month thing. My un, my understanding now and my concern was originally when I proposed this, I was thinking that you could still do full-time seasonal, but when we discussed it here, it was nineteen and a half hours. And when I discussed that with Mr. Perry, I said, I would rather have someone work two full days and possibly a half day where they could stay at Kennedy Park that particular day, picking papers or whatever, because if I have to use someone for a half day for nineteen and a half hours, by the time I get them to where they're gonna go, trans, have them do a task for an hour and a half, then I have to have one of my men transfer them back. So I'm losing that time. So if I'm going to do this, I prefer it to be all day. And where it's, where you're saying how many, five to ten, that was because I was basing it on a forty-hour week, and I think when they broke it down, it could be ten for a nineteen and a half hour week.
Did you say you needed one of your men to drive them back? They can't drive themselves to a park?
Well, I would only have so many vehicles, so they usually travel in pairs at minimum.
So if a part-time worker shows up to work and is going to work in a park that day, they can't drive their own vehicle?
I don't have enough vehicles to give, if, every person.
They can't drive their own vehicle?
Yeah, Councilor, it's a liability.
Oh, their own personal vehicle? Oh, I don't think it's...
That, that, the personal vehicle piece, i- it's, it's a liability issue.
To drive to work?
Well, no, no, to drive while at work to a job site. So if he reports to the park department, checks into work...
But if she's saying they're going to stay at Kennedy Park for that happen?
They would be able to do that every day, though.
Oh, I get what you're saying, so they leave their house and go report to where we're telling them? Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your...
I, I just, I don't want to see a, you know, half day, a four-hour day, turn into an hour of work because...
Right.
Right, and, and to Mrs. Smith's point, I think having them for two full days, if that encompasses the nineteen and a half hours, is going to be more productivity for her. So, right, they come in at seven, they punch in, they get their stuff together, they get a sign, they get in the vehicle, take some time, they get lunch, they get break, so that cuts into that day. If we know we have them for eight hours and we know what days they are, we can schedule that workload for them and be ready when they do come in.
Um, so then my other question is, if, if this budget would get you through, um, the end of June next year, so you'd be able to start in April of next year?
With the seasonals, because it would run into, if lights want, yeah.
Yeah. And then my final question for this is, when are you going to, you can't advertise until this is passed, correct?
That's what I was...
So you won't be passed, you won't be advertising until July? So we might get a few months out of at least this year, but then it would be in the spring as well, so, all right. At least as a start. And then my other question, and I, I can't find it in either cemeteries or parks, and I apologize, I know that cemeteries has trees in it, but where, um, tell me what, what we have for tree commissioners? Do we have tree commissioners?
We don't have a, an, a dedicated tree commissioner. That would fall pretty much on, on me at this point, that's the way it's been. So I work with the, for a street tree planting program, um, I, you know, Chris deals with our arborists, so Chris and I pretty much handle the, the tree commissioner duties as a team.
But we have people that have been sworn in by the clerk as tree commissioners.
The, the Board of Park Commissioners is in charge of trees and cemeteries as well, and there is also a tree commission.
Yes.
Commission, right.
So who's in charge of the tree commission?
I believe they report, that they're a commission, but they report their findings to the Board of Park Commissioners.
So for, so I'm, I'm, I...
Because this, the board has to appoint one of their members to serve on that tree commission.
So you have a park board member on the tree commission?
We did.
Tree commission has not met in quite some time, Council, to be honest.
So, okay, so what, I guess my question is, why are we swearing people in, but then we don't have anything? And I agree that this was a couple of years ago, but we sworn in tree commissioners who did what they were supposed to do, and then, um, nothing came of it. So we ask people to, I, I'm assuming it's a volunteer?
Yes.
We're not paying tree commissioners, correct?
No.
So we're swearing people in, asking them to serve, they're, they're voluntarily doing so, they're going through whatever it is the clerk tells them that they need to do, and then nothing comes in it. So that, um, that shouldn't happen, and if we are going to use tree commissioners, then let's make the decision, and at the very least, get back to the people that were sworn in and, um, let them know either, thank you, we, we'd like to move forward, and you're probably expired by this point, I'm not sure how long they're sworn in for, but, and if we're going to use them, then, then let's do what needs to happen. But we can't have people being sworn in and then, um, just kind of left hanging. That's not fair.
And, and Councilor, I'll be looking for your help on that as well, because if you look at the ordinance, I don't have it in front of me, so, um, it's not verbatim, but...
We're not going to get into ordinance discussions right now. We're going to ask budget questions, please, and answer budget questions.
It's, okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, so that was my, that was my question on the, um, the tree. So I'll speak to you after, um, Mr. Perry on the tree commissioners.
Sure.
Those are my only questions for you, Mrs. Smith. Oh, no, I'm sorry, take it back. This is not a budget question, but I'm not apologizing for it. When do the splash pads open?
Monday.
Thank you.
So... They usually coincide with the food lunch programs.
Thank you. I yield.
Councilor in seat one, Councilor Kadim.
Um, I don't have any, any questions, but I, I do just want to make a statement that I make for the last five years or so. Um, so I appreciate, and I, and I like the fact that we have five to ten seasonal workers. Um, we saw the expense line item increase by twelve point one percent. I'll still state that we were not doing enough for, for the parks. Um, you look at that twelve point one percent increase, it's a fifty-one thousand, nine hundred dollars. Forty-one percent of that is going to the CSO water charge. Um, so that leaves about thirty thousand, seven hundred dollars for your department. Um, I take out natural gas, I take out maintenance to vehicles, I take out tools, I take out all this wonderful stuff, and for the twenty-four parks that we have, we're appropriating under three thousand dollars to our parks. Um, I don't know how many more times we can have this discussion, I think, I find it unacceptable. I think this department has been, um, underbudgeted for, for quite some time, and, you know, I was hoping to see something a little bit different since we've had this conversation, I think, three or four times, uh, this year alone. Uh, so again, I just want to voice my frustration that we're underfunding, uh, the Parks Department, which we've been talking about for the last five to six years, so, uh, with that, I yield.
Councilor in seat seven, Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. I guess I've been, it's probably not in your budget, her budget, your budget, I'm going to ask the question anyway. I've been chasing this thing down for ten years for North Park. You got the pool there, all the kids play up the, the road, all well and good, and I talked to the mayor about it, several mayors about it, splash pad, splash pad, uh, Mr. Pacheco, we're gonna get it, we're gonna get it. A lot of poor people there. I mean, they go up and they play on the swings and everything else. You got that piece of land, the pool's no good, why don't we utilize it? I don't know if you can get a grant or whatever, but the kids there need relief as well. A lot of poor people down there. But, uh, you know, I try to get it, but I don't go anywhere. But just keep it in mind, for the kids. I yield, thank you.
Councilor, thank you. Councilor in seat two, Councilor Deion.
Yeah, just one follow-up question. Is it safe to assume that the rate and the, and how it would be, the electric bills would be classified and all parks would be the same as Britlin Park? And the only reason I ask that is because a side note here on the electricity is part of the seventy thousand is three thousand dollars for Britlin Park soccer lights. So if that's...
I can address that because when I saw it, 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 that was in last year's, that was the, um, a description of last year's that for some reason carried forward, because what happened was, the original budget for electricity was seventy thousand dollars. However, we had the issue with the leagues at the soccer field charging other leagues, so that particular location came back to the city of Fall River before any of those other youth leagues, before any of the other resolutions were put in. And that appropriation went to seventy-three thousand dollars in my last budget. So that's why you see that three thousand. It was because in the previous budget, the explanation for why it went from seventy to seventy-three was because we took on Britlin Park.
Okay.
And now it, I, I believe it went back to seventy.
It did, it did.
So I'm not sure why that...
Based on the analysis of the total cost across the city meters.
But that was what that, seventy to seventy-three, that's what that explanation was. It's actually, should have been taken out, but it somehow carried forward.
Okay. Um, but again, uh, my assumption is that whatever the rate is we're being charged for that should be uniform for all parks.
Yes.
So we essentially know the answer to what rate we're going to be paying for electric.
I can check the electric...
Not the dollar amount in the end result, but the rate.
Right, I ju, I, I might have misunderstood your question of what their rate would be to my rate. I would definitely be able to tell you what the city of Fall River was paying for a rate, but I would have to compare it to a, a, a bill, or an actual bill that they submitted once I get that particular location, and I can get you that information.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Councilor in seat six, Councilor Peckham.
My question was answered, I yield.
Terrific. Any further questions for Mrs. Smith? Herring, no, thank you very much. Fire EMS. So we, we have our enterprise funds for emergency medical services that begins on page three, five, five, three, five, s, actually, three, five, seven, three, five, seven.
You want me to move here also?
Yeah, have them come down, get it all, big party. Um, as you all convene before us, welcome. I'd like, just for my own edification, could you let us know how much money you have in the stabilization account for EMS? Would you happen to know that?
I, I didn't bring that with me this evening, Councilor.
Is it, is it usually of the hundreds of thousands or of the millions?
I, I believe it's, and, and this is just...
Yeah, I'm not going to hold you to it, trust me.
I believe it's a little over two million.
Okay. Is that assist, usually in your, in your forecasting, in your, your budgeting, is that usually a typical number of two million that is readily stays in their stabilization account in EMS?
Um, for the most part, they, they utilize their stabilization fund to, um, in, in some instances, to purchase ambulances, so it has fluctuated. Um, the last couple of years, um, they have not had a significant amount of free cash that they have added to their stabilization fund, as I recall. But again, I would have to get that information for you.
EMS, if you want to do a, a brief presentation, how are you doing? What do you need?
Uh, Mr. President.
Councilor in seat one.
Um, through you, I mean, this, this is budget presentations, budget discussions. This isn't the first night that councils have asked about balances, um, in different stabilization accounts, balances in different line items, and we, the consistent answer we receive is that we do not have that tonight. Is it too much to ask through you that we have a list of what our accounts balances, what we anticipate them to be at the year ends, things of that nature?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a valid request, um, going forward, Mrs. Sahadi. I know we have probably somewhere in our budget where you were, where you were at prior to the end of March, but it's a valid point by our colleague. Thank you. EMS, if you want to do a brief presentation first, or you, you have no...
Uh, yeah, yeah, for our fiscal year that we're going to be going into, uh, there are no significant changes to our budget. You might notice some line items like medical supplies have gone down a little bit. That's only based on the COVID fever reimbursements that are going to continue to December 31st. So N95 masks, IV catheters, we expect to get reimbursed for some of that stuff. So we projected that we would save some money on the medical supplies, so that was deducted a little. Our service medical director was reduced a little bit. We're going with service medical director that's more local, and it will save a few thousand dollars with him. But other than that, there's no major changes. We do have the capital line. You noticed that we might have a new squad coming. But other than that, there's nothing crazy. The staff side, they get a 1% raise July 1st. We're at full complement at this time. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Counselor, seat six. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
I'm going to yield.
Fair enough. Anybody else? EMS, EMS only. So I look at this EMS medical revenue department as a department that is making, granted, it's a moneymaker when it comes to the user fees, the primary care reimbursements, PCG reimbursements, and the revenue. I understand it's, it's an enterprise account. Are you expecting to achieve this $9 million in proposed revenue for your enterprise account?
Yes, sir.
And your total expenses, I see $5.2 million in salaries. And I'm seeing another total of, Mrs. Sahadi, is it 3.7? Yes, 3.7. Okay.
So a significant amount of the 3.7 is health and pension.
Mm-hmm.
And the shared payroll with the fire department.
Okay. Why? Because you have some members that are EMS firefighters that get shared into?
The squad, yes.
We have five.
You have five. Interesting. Thank you. Herring, no further questions on EMS. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Mr. President, just through you, I've just got a question. I know we received the financial forecast for the general fund budget. Did we receive any for the enterprise fund, so EMS, water, sewer?
I don't know if we have it up here. Mrs. Sahadi, did you furnish that to us?
We do not. We provide the community with the forecast for the general, the five-year, I'm assuming you're asking, the five, the general fund only.
Can you get us the enterprise?
I don't prepare it. I can certainly work on it this coming year. I believe the request has always been for just the general fund, so I can work with the, both, both departments. So water and sewer, Mr. Furlan, as well as EMS for preparing a five-year forecast going forward. They are part of the capital plan, but they have not been, to date, part of the five-year forecast. And just to clarify, Ms. Fontz just texted us, the balance in the stabilization fund is 2,628,602.
So 2.6 million.
That's correct.
And do you, you expect, Counselor in seat one, do you yield?
Yeah, I was just asking for that, if we, if we can just get that prepared because I think your line of questioning was, you know, in terms of the revenue and whether or not we can maintain the 9 million, I think that would obviously lend itself in terms of an analysis as to whether or not the account is sustainable. I think that's where you were going with your line of questioning.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to find out, yeah.
So the rates have increased slightly, Counselor, so I believe that the 9 million-
What rates?
The-
The user, the user rates?
User fees, that's correct.
Yeah, ambulance rates.
By how much?
They went up by maybe $100, ALS 1, ALS 2, and BLS.
So is that what, I don't mean to cut you off, Counsel, but is that what you're looking at for a couple hundred thousand dollars in increased revenue in the budget?
Yes. So based on the call value, you say $100 per call, you're looking at about 24,000 calls a year to 22,000 calls a year. So that would add up to about $200,000. We also have implemented a new program with returns, returning people from home from St. Anne's, which from October 1st to the date, as we've already collected 369,000 in that new program. And that's only been from October 1st to June 15th, I believe we did the analysis. So that with that rescue alone, even with the cost of the crew and the cost of fuel, maintenance, you're still looking at $200,000 profit to date.
2.4 million. Because if you're, if you're looking at $24,000 times $100, that's 2.4 million.
Twenty, 24,000 calls.
24,000 calls.
Yeah, that truck has done 1,098 calls to date. So from October 1st to June 15th, it's done 1,098 calls. Returns and obviously 911 calls.
Sure.
It, we've collected $368,000. We have about another 100 and, 200,000, 239,000 that's been billed out based on contractual balances, Medicaid, Medicare. We usually collect about, out of that money, we probably get about a 110,000 out of that, and the rest would be contractual write-offs.
All right, I guess I was just, I, I looked at the, you said you had 24,000, 24,000 calls.
Yeah, calls. That's for department-wide.
Oh, that's department-wide?
Yeah, department-wide for EMS, yes.
So what do you average per call?
We collect, we, if you, we base it on the Medicare rate, so we base it on $458 plus mileage.
458?
We don't base our reimbursements on Blue Cross or Harvard Pilgrim because obviously we, majority of our reimbursement is Medicare, Medicaid, Mass Health. And then obviously you have motor vehicle accidents, et cetera.
Sure, okay. So you average, I'm just curious, 458 calls per year?
Per call.
I'm sorry?
$458 a call.
I'm sorry, $458 per call, and how many calls do you average per year? I apologize.
24,000.
24,000.
Correct.
That's $10.9 million. And that's not including the reimbursements from Medicare?
That, so you basically add 10.9 million, but then you have contractual write-off. So if someone has Medicare and they have Mass Health, we can't, we can only collect the $450. So even if we billed $2,000 for the run, we can only collect the $458 plus mileage.
Right, so-
And if they have a co-pay, we cannot bill them the co-pay, so we usually eat the co-pay.
No, no, I, I get that, but I guess a conservative number, deputy, is that we have $458 per call as a conservative number.
Correct.
So we could average $600 a call if we really talked about it, right? So if you take $458, and we average 24,000 calls a year, that's almost $11 million in revenue. So that's a conservative number speaking. So why are we predicting that we are going to get $9 million of proposed revenue in EMS when we average?
Well, and let me, let me just correct. The 24,000 calls a year are 24,000 responses. And we only get paid for the transports. So out of 24,000 calls, if we transport 19,000 of those people, that's what the projected revenue would be.
Okay, great. So of the $9 million that you projected to bring into this department for, for this fiscal year, what average did you use to determine that $9 million number?
We based it on last year's numbers, pre-COVID, obviously, because our call value went down last year. So we based it on the 24,000 responses and approximately 17,000 to 18,000 transports.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Just a question. Do we, and I know you said that we do, and I know this, we respond to calls and sometimes a person doesn't have to go to the hospital. Do we try, charge for triage? The medics go there and-
Unfortunately, in the state of Massachusetts, we can't charge for the no transports. We have to physically transport them.
Okay.
That's just the way the mass general laws are written right now for ambulances in the state.
Okay, I wasn't sure, so I, I need clarification.
Medicaid, they all have that.
I appreciate that.
They have to physically transport.
All right, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President.
I just have one question. On your, on your receivables, how long before you write them off? I'm wondering how much is uncollected.
I don't have the, I can get you the exact numbers, Counselor, tomorrow morning. On what's not collected, I can get you that number to date. But basically, if you look at, you know, someone that has Medicare, it's $450 plus $30 per mile. So say it's $500 total for the call. We bill $2,000. So we write off that $1,500 or $1,600. So I can get you those numbers. It's a, it's a large number.
So say that one more time. So do you have the $2,000 in here, or do you have the 450 for your revenue?
By law, we have to bill our ambulance rate to everybody, which is approximately 1,800 to $2,000 based on ALS 1, ALS 2, or BLS. And then if they have Medicare, we only get paid the Medicare rate. We, and if they have Mass Health or Medicaid, we cannot bill them the co-pay. Sometimes it's $92, sometimes it's $122. We can't bill that. We have to eat the 122. But in reality, we have to eat the total difference of the bill that was, so we're actually eating $1,500. We get paid 500 per se, and we have to eat the, we write off the $1,500.
So which number do you use when you're projecting your revenues? The $2,000, or do you, do you do a percentage at the 450?
We base it on the Medicare rate.
And you-
Which is the $458 plus mileage.
Got it. Okay, so you'll let us know what you have in, on collectible and how long before you write off?
I'll have that email to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Olivera. Thank you, Counselor. Any further questions for Mr. Olivera only? Ms. Olivera, you're free to go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your help. For Chief Lynch. Chief?
Good, good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
How are you, Chief?
Very good, thanks. So you want me to give a little brief summary here?
Please, brief, yep.
So we're looking pretty good here. If you look at most of the line items, most of the increases are based on the contractual agreements with Local 1314. The only difference in anything on the, from previous years, you will notice that we have a capital item in there. And Counselor Liberty, I think you'll appreciate this because I know it was your concern last year, that the internal klaxon system in the stations, that's in there to be replaced. And also the other item that's in there, is a capital item, is a generator for the machine shop. It's the only building in the fire department that does not have emergency electricity when it goes out. So that's in there also. Any other questions? I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory.
I got a question.
Very comfortable.
Are we sharing dispatchers with EMS?
Are we what?
Are we sharing dispatchers with, with EMS?
There's one dedicated dispatcher for the fire side. And that dispatcher dispatches not just the fire suppression forces, but also the medical sources. So yes, the simple answer to that is yes.
So there's only one person? Is it one person, like, per day, or is it multiple people doing it? Like, is it only one person?
There's only one dedicated seat to fire dispatch.
And how many people work in that seat? Is it like a rotating, like, the dispatcher shift?
Yes, there's many people assigned to that.
Okay.
All the dispatchers, basically, they also do police dispatching and fire dispatching, but they rotate. So it is not like, there's not a cadre of dispatchers totally dedicated to fire dispatching. They all move on all the different seats. So one day, the dispatcher might do police dispatching. The next day, they might do fire dispatching, and it rotates like that.
So then we, because we have a line in the EMS expense salaries of $232,507. That's a new line item that was added in this municipal budget. I should ask Mr. Olivera this, but what goes into that?
Where is that?
That's on page 358. If you looked at EMS shared dispatchers, 232,507, base holiday stipend step.
Is that an indirect payback?
Mr. President, I, I think, just point of clarification, I think that was just trying to capture costs associated with EMS, but I could be wrong.
You know, I believe you're, you're correct, Counselor, and I believe they were separating the squad from the dispatchers.
I was just wondering, because I was looking at it and it, and it caught my eye. Is that a new?
It's, it's similar to what they were doing with the firefighters that go on the squad. They're firefighters, but they're, but they're getting charged to the, it's, it's just semantics as to where they're being charged, whether it's the general fund or-
EMS enterprise, got it. Hmm. Thank you.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Chief, am I to anticipate from reading this side note that you're retiring?
Uh, that's affirmative, but I'm not letting that out, so.
Well, I guess we just did. All righty.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Well, it's not, anyway, it's not soon. I'll be around for a while, yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, we have a $275,000 retirement line item. All right. Do you anticipate any other people that may be retiring that's not, that weren't in this budget originally?
No, there could be surprises. You know, the last budget, we had several people, like, we had one person just resign. We had a person move through Texas, and he just dropped out in our lap, like, literally like three weeks ago, one of our younger firefighters. So there's always firefighters that are unanticipated. And we base that item on firefighters that are reaching that age where they can retire at full pension. So that's where that number comes from, but, you know, there's always surprises. There's only two people very definite, definite on that, and I'm one of them.
All righty. Well, I guess with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Mr. President, did Counselor in seat one ask that this come back before us, again, when his questions are answered from the administration, police and fire?
Yes, he did.
Okay. So, Mrs. Sahadi, will you have the updated numbers for fire as well?
I need to ask Counselor Kadim to resend the email. I checked my emails. I don't have anything from him on the 11th.
Okay, I have it. I can forward it to you. But will you also have the updated through today's date on the salaries?
You mean the updated Munis reports?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Thank you. Chief, where, where are we at with the merger?
With the merger, if you look on the second page, I think it is, where I describe our goals, and one of them is the integration between EMS and fire. So things that are moving forward with that, obviously, we've been able to keep Squad 11 manned with a firefighter 100% of the time and kept the squad open 100% of the time. The other thing, part of that is all our new firefighters are all EMTs and will remain EMTs and keep that up. The next step of that is going to be able to man medical rescues with firefighters. But right now, that is in negotiation with Local 1314.
And then I, I just have a, on number six, under your goals, continue the process of fire station repair. I just have one question that, because it just came up and, since we don't really have anyone for facilities, I'm just going to ask the chief. The AC, we have new equipment at the station on Eastern Ave for heat and air conditioning. There was outside equipment that was put in two years ago. I'm beginning to word condensers. Is that right?
Condensers, I, I believe that was all repaired. There were issues with the heating and air conditioning systems, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
I believe that was repaired.
Just recently?
Uh, yes, I think it was this year.
So just about a week ago, I believe, when we had that heat wave, the AC was out.
Yeah.
They had fans going, but we just put money into new equipment. And from my understanding, and maybe you can, when this comes back in front of us, if, if you were checking this?
Well, I have a question right now is, how are you getting your information, and nobody's reporting this to me?
I'm not sure.
Because I had no knowledge that the air conditioning system was down again.
Okay, so I was told the air-
So it'd be nice if your source could call me, and then I can call you.
Okay. So as I understand it, and I know this conversation came up before, when we put the, the new equipment on the outside of the building, but we didn't change the equipment on the inside of the building that it connects to?
Are you talking about the duct system?
I believe so. Could you find out where that's at, and I will-
I believe that was addressed, but the person I would have to ask is not here. It would be Chris Gallagher. And I think one of the biggest issues were that the duct system needed cleaning. And I'm pretty sure that the air conditioning and the heating units were all redone. But I'll, I'll find out for sure, but.
All right. I don't know who's in charge of that station, but if you could ask them if it's working, that would be great.
I'll ask the House Captain.
Thank you. I will hold my questions until we get the updated numbers. Counselor President, I yield.
Anything further for chief, for our chiefs? Nope. Thank you very much. Chiefs?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We will now enter into the phase of our community maintenance. Solid waste, streets and highways, snow removal, engineering. And if, if my memory serves me correctly, I believe that will be all departments. Unless I'm wrong, I'm going to ask our, our honorable clerks to make sure that I was right on.
Unless I'm wrong, I'm going to ask our honorable clerks to make sure that I was right on. Mr. Perry, welcome. Please brief, brief presentation.
Counselors, hello again. So we're here to, where would you like to start, Counsel President? Streets, highway, sanitation?
Counselor in seat five, Counsel Ali.
Well, sanitation's fine, but my only question was about the ARPA funding. For that second, of that list of five, I think the second one was economic, like a solving economic problem or something to that nature. What was that?
Negative economic impact.
Negative economic impact. So, we're about to hear, as we normally do, that the disposal costs are creating a big problem for us. We need to have fees and this, that, and the other. We know it's coming down. We know that it's pretty much every time. So one of the things that I think is that, and I think I even brought this up to you a couple of years ago, is that the trash, you know, the trash business, the trash industry itself has been, has proven to have been too expensive for the city, you know? Every, whether we had a, when we had a enterprise fund, it was still, it was still asking for transfers. When we took away the enterprise fund and put in bags, it was still, it still wasn't enough. Sam Sutter, when he became the mayor, decided to charge us $10 a month per unit. So if you had a three-unit apartment building, you would have to pay $30 a month for trash on top of the bags, on top of the tax raise. So, and maybe that, at that point, it probably would have been enough, but I think that still would have been too expensive. So I guess my point being is that this, I think this might qualify as, you know, an economic problem that we should maybe look to invest in to try to see if we can decrease that. You've brought to the table that we don't have the infrastructure in place to take away the disposal fees from both recycling and solid waste. So I would think if we were to invest infrastructurally with this funding, if we had the ability to do so, it would help our economic problem by eliminating or helping us to eliminate those fees. That's really all I have. So I was just asking if you had an idea of, if it were possible to utilize this funding to a degree, would you be able, would you be able to do that or would you look into that?
I would look into any avenue that's gonna, gonna help us decrease our cost or cover our costs. The topic that Mrs. Hadi and I have discussed is lost revenue.
Okay.
So, there is an increased tonnage due to the fact that COVID hit. Everybody was relegated to their homes, their home more, generating trash more. So that was an increase in tonnage. And I believe that revenue loss, rather, is something that we are looking at being able to cover with those funds. As far as infrastructure-wise and what we could do with our DPW facility or along those lines, again, as I said earlier, I'm not sure where the guidance is going to fall. But I do know the lost revenue piece, the increased tonnage and the cost of that due to COVID, I believe is absolutely coverable. I'll leave the rest of that statement to Mrs. Hadi.
And my next question is to Mrs. Hadi. When we talk about the difference between investing in lost revenue and in economic hardship, we'll just call it for sure, I guess. If we're, if we're looking at the lost revenue part of it, would, is, is that to be looked at as sort of a patch for a problem? Or is that something that we can look for long-term infrastructure investment to take care of a problem?
Well, again, the intention of Congress, when they passed the bill itself, it included an aspect of lost revenue because we had lost revenue. We had just parking meters, other revenue that, the cannabis revenue, we had lost revenue. So what the government was attempting to do with that component was allow the cities the next three or four years to invest or infuse into their budget an amount of federal aid to bring them back up to where they were before the pandemic.
So, I mean, and it's not exactly a patch, but it's sort of like a patch.
If you would like to call it a patch, you can.
Because it kind of just gets us back to where, it kind of just repairs it, gets us back to where we are, but it doesn't-
It's a source of revenue that the federal government has assigned a category that will allow us to invest that money in our budget as a source of revenue so we can bring back the firefighters, bring back the police.
Bring us back to where we were.
Bring back the vacant positions to where we were before the pandemic.
But I believe, and I hope you agree, that the DCM needs an investment in its infrastructure to really assist with-
We all agree. At this particular point.
But we may not be able to use this funding for it.
That is correct. And there is, there are, if, and I'm sure you are, reading all of the information that is out there. There may be another infrastructure bill that will be available to communities later this fall. And at which time, we're all hopeful that it will include, other than a very limited type of infrastructure, as this bill does. And it would allow us to spend some infrastructure money on the facility at Lewiston Street.
Because, I mean, we've all seen it way before I ever sat in this chair. The subject, this subject always seems to land whenever we have any kind of conversation about budgets and funding. Because even when the school department was here, we ended up talking about, you know, trash. We talk about it, we talk about it for local receipts. We need more revenue, this, that, and the other. But if we don't have the infrastructure, we're always going to be playing catch-up. I mean, I think that's really what it comes down to. We're going to be subject to whatever cost comes down the line for disposal. We were very fortunate to get the ABC contract to take away some of that recycling disposal cost. And has our budget reflected that? I asked you that last night, but has our budget reflected that?
It has not. Again, the budget is put together in the early spring.
Right.
And at that particular point, the contract was not with ABC and the cost per ton was higher.
So I think we have to at least get a little bit of a snapshot as to what that line item will look like. What line item, by the way, does it reflect the disposal cost? Because I don't know if it's on here specifically.
It's the recycling, Counselor. The 1.1 million from last year, it's budgeted at 1.3 for this year. That would be your particular line item, directly under solid waste disposal.
All right, great.
But I think too, and Mr. Perry could certainly better explain this at this particular point, but because there are still so many unknowns and with the unprecedented times that we have just been through, we don't have a really good idea of what that tonnage should be per year. So I would caution the council if they were going to look at reducing this line item. Because as you know, the tonnage has continued to increase. We're hoping it's-
I wouldn't seek to reduce without the recommendation and, you know, analysis from him.
We're hoping that it would start to stabilize, but we have not chosen to go back in and make an adjustment to this department.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't just go willy-nilly and start, you know, doing that.
Appreciate that, Counsel.
But I do think, but I do think that we have to consider it. At least, that's what that gave me, was that there's at least a consideration that there will be. Yeah.
If I could add, Counsel, and, and Mr. Perry can correct me if I'm wrong. As far as the, your allusion, you alluded to the snapshot in time. I believe it's going to be a limited snapshot because I believe the change in vendors only went into effect during the 12 month of year.
June, yeah, beginning of June, yeah.
Physical year. So I just wanted to remind you of that.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I don't, I'm not, you know, I'm not expecting millions and millions. I'm just wondering. It is going to be an adjustment, I'm sure.
Certainly, Counsel. And I look at it like this. There is going to be a reduction there. But at the end of the day, to your point, solid waste is always going to be in a deficit.
It's volatile.
So if we have a surplus in that line item at the end of the year, that would help us, you know, stem our request to this council for a transfer at the end of the year. So hopefully, it'll be a wash, in essence, if those funds were realized. And then we could dedicate those to the solid waste disposal if necessary.
And I feel like more than any other department, if we're able to have an infrastructure investment in the DCM, it's going to, it's going to alleviate some of the stress that it's put on other, you know, other budgets and other departments, I believe.
Thank you, Counsel.
I yield on that. I know we could really drag this conversation out, but I yield on it.
Appreciate your support.
Counselor in seat two, Counsel Deon.
Yes. On the line item for solid waste collections, $4,734,496 on page 215. Why is that number $88,720 higher than the contract number with easy disposal?
It shouldn't be. It should be the amount for year six.
Which would be 2022. Oh, maybe I'm, maybe I wrote the number, maybe I wrote the years wrong when I initially did this. So year three, four, five, six. Okay. All right, my error. I had 2023 marked next to that instead of 2022. Okay, my error. Sorry about that.
No apologies needed.
She's human after all.
Excuse me?
Counselor in seat two.
So I have two questions. And I know we've had the discussion a thousand times. That under the circumstances, we can't alleviate the problem of cost. However, since the last budget, have we done anything to reduce any expenses? Or, and have we done anything to create any revenues to at least make the number smaller?
So, to reduce the cost, I mean, we've, we've put a conscious effort on recycling education, tried to get our contamination levels down, which allowed me, you know, in my negotiations with ABC to assure them, show them that we are working on our contamination rate, which allowed us to get a one-year contract that doesn't have the contamination escalators that I've spoken about, which allowed us to get the price we got. So we're continuing to work down that road to keep those contamination numbers down so we can stay at a lower price. We have increased our efforts as far as enforcement. We have our enforcement offices, which just got reinstated in January. Once the new administration, not this past January, the January before, once this new administration took over, they had to get their footing back under them. They've issued more tickets and more citations than they have in the past. They're really putting concerted effort on that. Outside of that, I think it's difficult to get the entire whole of the city as residents to reduce, to try to streamline what they're putting in the bins. It's, it's no other way for us to reduce it. I'm not quite sure. I mean, we've talked about the business program. We've talked about six tenements. The only serious reduction that, in cost, would be avenues of that sort and/or, as I've said, a revenue generating stream that will allow us to help cover.
I know that we do collect and sell cardboard, correct?
Yes.
Have we looked any further into, I don't know, I don't know what method we use. You know, I don't know how, the ins and outs of that exactly. I believe at one time there was a discussion about perhaps purchasing our own equipment to bundle cardboard to sell.
A compactor, correct.
Which would, which would create more revenue than generally created by selling the cardboard in the method we're doing it now?
That is correct.
Have there been any further discussions on that? And have there been any numbers associated with that?
So to the infrastructure piece, and as we've discussed with the feasibility study for the hopeful upgrades to the DPW facility, that is one of the stations in the recycling center that I hope to have. We looked at it when we first brought the recycling to Lewiston Street, when that change was made. There was some discussion as to putting a compactor there. There was actually a grant to do it. But at that point, financially, even the, I believe it was around $60,000, put the concrete pad, put in the electric, you know, set up what needed to be set up. We didn't even have it at that point. Now, that conversation hasn't been had again. And we haven't thought about the compactor again, except for in my proposal for the updates to the DPW. But that is one of the aspects in that recycling center that I'd like to see. That, I have done some research on your redemption center idea. I don't see any other communities that municipally run a redemption center. So I think it's interesting to try to figure out if that's something legally as a city we can do. I don't think we're in a process of making money. Even the enterprise funds are supposed to, you know, charge what they charge. And then that is to cover their costs and/or support their capital needs and whatnot. I don't think we're a money-making entity. So it's interesting, though. But things along those lines are things we really need to start to research.
So would you say it's safe to say, I feel like, I feel like we talk and we spin our wheels and we talk and we spin our wheels and somehow we're never able to get the traction and make a move? I mean, do you feel that way yourself at times?
I feel like that all the time, Counselor. And unfortunately, in my situation, I look at it and I know, again, this will be an unpopular statement. But we had the setup. We had the, the, the things that we needed in place to generate the revenue to be able to cover our costs. You know, the fee, the bags. Unacceptable to the residents of this city, I understand. But when you look at every other community in the Commonwealth, almost to each individual one, there is some revenue generating source that helps them cover their costs. If it's not completely covering it, it's at least helping them absorb some of those, those costs.
But I'm speaking even in terms of a recycling center. I mean, that's been talked about now for a number of years, but yet we never get there. We never get that improvement that is going to help us long-term.
So I'm frustrated with the spinning of the wheels. You're right. But I'm equally as excited about the fact that we're having the conversation. And I can see that the support is there for the upgrades to the DPW, you know? The feasibility study was step one. We have some renderings of what we'd like to do. You know, Mr. Pacheco and I sat at this table 12 years ago and talked about, you know, a transfer station with a lot of different amenities, such as a recycling center and things we could do. 70% of the voters approved it. It never went anywhere. It died on the table. And then since then, there hasn't been any appetite to go back down that road and say, you were going to look at a transfer station. It's going to cost us $15 to $20 million. It's a huge investment. And it's tough to get everybody on board with an investment like that. So I think this process with the feasibility study and the upgrades is a small step to show that, yes, we can be productive. We can be better at what we do. We can be more efficient. Excuse me. And then once we show that and we can prove that, you know, we can start to move down that road, I think that'll just gain us some traction and support to say, if we continue that infrastructure investment, we're just going to get better at what we do and help us reduce our costs.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat five, Counsel Ali.
My last piece, and just to, just to jump on this, I contacted New Bedford, City of New Bedford, after a conversation you and I had around, around May, June, early, early May, I'm sorry, early June, late May. Where you, where on this floor, actually, I mentioned that New Bedford didn't have any fees or bags. It was one of the communities that didn't. What you said in turn, that they had infrastructure in place, right? So to that point, and I think this just solidifies the argument that if people want to avoid the, you know, this, this, this extra cost, this extra fee, it's, we have to do the same thing that, that New Bedford did and invested in something that is going to have some infrastructure in place. So that way, we don't have to have these fees and bags. And that way, we can just take care of our own situation. Also, I just want to say that it was just a big coincidence that right after we had that conversation, you were able to get that contract with ABC. And that's only one year, correct?
That's one year for now, yes.
And, and we're just going to do the David Ortiz one-year-at-a-time approach?
I don't, I don't, I don't hope for that. But again, with the contamination concerns on both ends, my end and ABC's end, we thought, you know, let's, let's get a year in. Let's get a handle on where our contamination levels are. And we haven't had an audit in quite some time. Casella used to do our audits. And then reassess toward the end of the year.
And just so people listening, ABC, New Bedford has a dump for that. They don't have to ship out their recycling clothes. So they don't have those, those extra disposal fees that we have. And that's the reason why we're in the situation we're in. But the next best thing right now is to utilize what New Bedford has. So we're at that point right now. And at least, I think I call it a stopgap, you know? It's to get us to the next phase. But our next phase needs to be some type of, we either need to eliminate trash completely out of Fall River, the business itself, or invest in, in an infrastructure that's going to allow us to offset those, those disposal costs. So I yield. Thank you.
Anything further?
Quick, hon, quick, hon, McCall.
Yeah.
Counsel President, and just piggybacking on, onto Mr. Perry's response to Counsel Deon, not just the transfer station went by the wayside, but there was a point where we also burned. And I'm not, I'm not suggesting that that would be the way to go again, but that was a potential moneymaker. And that died and went by the wayside. So, you know, another potential revenue generating idea also kind of died on the vine. And then you have the transfer station that died on the vine. And then the bags and the fee ended up going away and as part of a recall and whatnot. I do agree with the bag issue on New Bedford, but we do know New Bedford, I believe, still has their own dump or partially owns a dump.
ABC does, yeah.
In partnership with Dartmouth and Acushnet and whatnot. So, and also from a historical standpoint, New Bedford went to the two-and-a-half levee, where over the last 30 years, I'm- where over the last 30 years, I'm sure we have several years where we did not, for whatever reason. So, you know, that, that, we haven't kept up anywhere near our own revenue, whether, whether it be property taxes or other, or, or other, other means, where New Bedford was willing to do that year after year after year to potentially stay ahead of the curves and stay ahead of the poor economic times or whatnot, where we didn't, as a city, go to those levies. And I'm sure, you know, folks were happy at the time. But now, you know, the, 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 the bill collector has come knocking on the door and it's in the, it's in the form of trash collection. The debt collector, I should say.
Thank you, Counsel President.
Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Thank you. Mrs. Sahadi, is solid waste is the other department that you said that was going to be over in the salary line item? That there was a transfer for, along with police and fire?
Police and fire are salaries. They certainly both may have turnbacks in their expenses, but it's salaries. And solid waste is expenses.
Okay. So, could you also bring us an update on the solid waste expenses through today? And then the other question I have, Counsel President, a few months back, we had, I believe it was Counselor Deon and I had put in a resolution asking for copies of snow expenses. And the administration at that, that night, they had said they, they don't keep that information.
I'm sorry, what?
We had put in a...
I heard you. That was, that was a rhetorical question. This, can you, can you answer Counsel Vice President's question about if we keep snow invoices?
I'm not sure what she's asking for. She's asking for years prior. The Department of Local Services authorizes the auditing department to dispose of invoices after the audit is completed. So, if you're asking for old invoices, we would not have them. I do know that Mr. Perry had his staff dig through some of the information they had for old invoices. We may not have every invoice, but we do have some. But I don't know specifically what you're looking for.
So, how often? They do that audit every year?
We have an audit every year, yes. We have it done by an independent audit firm that provides an opinion on the financials, statements of the city.
So, we don't keep any of the, after that audit is done, we don't keep any of the invoices for snow?
For anything in any department. We don't keep prior invoices once the audit is completed.
Counselor, I, I have had my staff, as Ms. Sahadi said, gather as much information as they can for those snow removal costs for those years. That information is significant. We were able to dig up quite a bit of our own records that we keep. And we store them away in the basement here once we're done with the season. So, I do have some information that can be provided.
Okay. So, that's a different answer?
Well, it's, it's not different in the sense that I answered the question, which is the DOR has the auditing department dispose of all of the invoices from every department at the completion of the audit. They send in a letter to the Department of Revenue. They indicate that the, the audit is completed and the invoices are then destroyed.
Correct. And you have copies of those invoices?
I have, I have invoices from snow from, I believe the request was from 2016, correct?
It was for several years. I'd had, I would ask
I think we went back to 2016. I gathered as much of that information as I could find within our department.
Okay. So, um, I'll hold my snow questions. And then the other question I had on other personnel costs under streets and highways. It is, it's 33,000 in here.
Streets and highways, Counselor, or sanitation? We're jumping.
Streets and highways. Streets and highways.
Yes, ma'am.
33,000 in here. And you have a one and a half percent adjustment. And then, I just want to clarify, so I see that there's an increase in here for a salary and it goes back to December of 2020. But through you, Mr. President, to Counselor in seat two. Counselor in seat two, did you ask last night in ordinance if once a contract is put through at a specific amount, it stays that amount through the end of the contract? And it is not increased in the middle of the contract? Did you ask that question last night?
Um, if I remember correctly, I, I made a comment to the effect of, if you have a contract, why would somebody get a CPI or, or, or one and a half percent or 2% like the unions get? Shouldn't a contract just be a contract and that's the money that you make? For that time period, I believe, is, is what you're talking about.
So, was this contract, Mrs. Sahadi, is this an 18-month contract?
No, that, I believe that was, was a two-year contract. That particular contract is one that I believe had an increase in it on an annual basis, based on the same percentage increase that the union would have received.
Counselor, what, what, exactly which contract are we speaking to? Oh, mine. Okay. All right.
I'm not, I feel like that came down in, in two...
His contract would have expired in December.
It did expire in September.
Right. So, this says 12/20 through 6/22, so it was 18 months. But I think what had come down to us was 5,000 and 5,000. It wasn't a percentage, but it was two separate pieces. But doing the math, I don't see that in here. I only, I see the, because you have about 27, 28,000 for a one and a half percent increase, unless it's included in that 27,000 dollars.
I have to see, I don't have that worksheet in front of me, but it probably is not in the column that says one and a half. It would have been in a separate column.
Okay. So, I only see one of the, the 5,000s in there. And I will save my other questions until we have the updated expenses on solid waste. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
Just for clarification, Counselor in seat four asked about documentation. And the statement was stated that after the audit's completed, it's supposed to be, we're allowed to delete it. I'm just looking at the retention records schedule. It says for fiscal audit records. Document year ends or other audits of an agency's program accounts, including internal or external audits, including audit reports, work papers, responses and related correspondence. Agent's primary copy of the final audit reports and responses are permanent, which we keep. And then audit background materials and work papers would have to be retained for six years. Would that not be included in the invoices?
I'm not sure, Counselor. I would have to check with Ms. Argo. She sends a letter to DOR on an annual basis and gets authorization to destroy invoices for the, the prior particular year that's been audited. And I believe she maintains those letters from DOR.
Because I would, I would think that a lot of the state retention records do require at least a minimum of three-year retention.
Again, I would have to speak with Ms. Argo. She is the one that speaks directly to, or sends the request directly to DOR.
So, I just, as a clarification to Counselor in seat four, so a minimum of three years or depending on what it is, it could be six or more years.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
Okay. Just for clarification on what you just said. You said that she calls the DOR to get...
I believe she writes to them.
Oh, right. Either way, communicates with. To get authorization to get rid of the files, correct?
Dispose of the invoices, that's correct.
So, if it was a requirement of the DOR, why would she have to communicate with them to get authorization to get rid of the invoices?
Because that's what DOR requires. Even in the treasurer's office, if they were going to dispose of any old bank statements, they need to require or, or a request from DOR authorization to dispose of the records.
Earlier, and I don't want to quote you verbatim, it was pretty much said that the DOR tells you after the audit that you get rid of...
Well, you request it. I mean, it's, it's a standard procedure at the end of every audit.
I, I believe we might be getting that confused with the public records law that states that we have to just, uh, remove, or we can dispose of specific documentation under the public records law. But I don't know if it's per se the, the audit.
It, it is, Counselor. We don't have, Mr. Perry was fortunate enough to have some stuff out at the garage and some stuff in the basement. But we do not have old invoices here in City Hall because they have been destroyed. Ms. Argo tries to keep a couple of years' worth, just to be on the safe side in case we're going back a couple of years. But she does not have the old records because they have been, as, as she indicated to me, they have been destroyed at some point based on the Department of Revenue. Right now, in, in the last couple of years, we, we are using an online munis TCM ability to scan stuff in. So, we will have them for a lot longer period of time. But when we were storing them all in the basement, they were being, they were being, being destroyed at some point based on a communication with the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, as I understand it from Ms. Argo. I can ask her again to clarify exactly how it happens.
Counsel President, if I may?
I still have the floor, if you don't mind.
Oh, I apologize.
No, no worries. So, she tries to keep the records. The DOR tells us we have to get rid of them.
She communicates asking for the request. I mean...
My, my, the reason I'm asking these questions is there's been so many questions over the past, what, four or five years about snow and how it's removed and stipends being given out. And I, I think there should be better, and this is not directed towards you at all. Just in general, so many snow question. We should be able to just cite this by now with the amount of snow questions that have been brought up over the past few years. Whether or not we are mandated to get rid of that documentation by the Department of Revenue, not have to ask for authorization, not try to keep a box in a garage somewhere because we may need it down the road and we don't want to tell the DOR. And I'm not saying that's what you're saying, but that's how I interpret it. So, I, if you don't mind, can we get clarification on this as well?
I will ask Ms. Argo exactly how she communicates with the DOR and what the response is.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Perry? Counselor in seat eight, Counselor Pereira.
Not to Mr. Perry, but to Mrs. Sahadi. What are we paying debt service for the CSO out of the budget this year? You know?
I, I don't know what the principal and interest payment is on the debt service specifically for the CSO. The authorization was 128 million. I think as of the last time we ran the analysis, there was about 73,000 left to borrow on it. So, the projects, this is a long project. I would have to pull the debt that we have authorized and issued and determine what the principal and interest is on that specific project.
I'm just curious, because as Mr. McCoy was stating, you know, New Bedford, they do this and this and they have this money. I think we need to look at what we have to pay out for debt specifically to the CSO. That is not part of our budget.
Right. That would be in Mr. Furlan's budget. And I don't believe he broke out that piece specifically.
I looked for, I didn't see it. Maybe you can find it.
I don't think he did. But I can certainly, I can certainly look at the debt service schedule and break out the components that relate to the CSO.
Well, you know, it just, it gets difficult because it is an unfunded mandate that we've gotten hit with. And that would have been money that we would be using in our budget to be able to provide more services to the community that we can. If we could use that, the payment that we make, if that payment could be thrown back into our budget. And, you know, we've all tried to contact the state, the, the federal delegation to see if they can get help. I don't know. I know we have oppa money and I don't know if we can use it for that. But, I mean, we could use all 70 million of oppa money to put towards that and have nothing. Do you know what I mean? And I don't think that that's a good idea to do. But I just never see, it seems like we're never going to get rid of that bill. But with that, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further questions. From Mr. Perry, thank you. The only other departments that we haven't seen or spoke to is assessments and insurance and other. If there's no other questions regarding the municipal budget that we've had in the presentations before this council, any further questions?
Thank you, Counsel.
The only, the only question...
Counselor in seat eight.
The only question that I have is that I thought we were going to have the meeting today. And if need be, we'd have another meeting tomorrow. And I'm having surgery on the 24th. I said that to the clerk. She told you. But for some reason, yesterday's meeting was canceled because someone can't be here. We're going to come back on the 29th.
Tomorrow's meeting is canceled, yeah.
So, and we're going to come back on the 29th, but my surgery's on Thursday, the 24th. So, I now may not be able to be here.
Okay.
So, I just want people to know that.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Yeah. So, to, to Mr. McCoy, actually, while you're here. It's not necessarily related to the budget. But I want to forward you Counselor Kadim's email that hasn't gotten a response yet. I'm also going to forward the snow resolution, the OT funds resolution. I've sent two emails to the mayor, one to Corporation Council and one to Mrs. Sahadi and Tammy Motino. None of them have been, no responses on any of them in the last two weeks. So, I'm going to forward them all to you.
Thank you.
Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to reject the budget.
Motion has been made by Counselor Deon to reject the municipal budget that is before us.
I will second that motion.
Seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion on the motion to reject, Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deon.
Yeah, I feel like we have too many indiscriminate, too much money that, that is for indiscriminate raises. It's not necessarily specific. And as it was described, the, the money is scattered or sprinkled, excuse me, sprinkled throughout the budget. We had $100,000 line item that nobody initially knew what it was for or why it was there. Then we got an explanation that it was for perhaps renovations. I think we've come to realize it had nothing to do with ADA compliances. I, you know, we have a structural deficit. I, I just think that there's just a lot of financial issues. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Counselor Peckham.
My reason for seconding that motion is exactly that reason. The $100,000 line item that we could not get an answer on. We were told that originally it was spent on council chambers, which cannot happen because we haven't voted on the budget yet. We didn't get an accurate depiction of where that $100,000 was going to go. So, therefore, just in that alone, I was going to give this the benefit of the doubt, but I second the motion to reject. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Counsel Vice President.
Counsel President, when will the departments be coming back? Would that be next Wednesday?
The departments? You want all the departments back?
No, the ones that, we're still waiting for updated information. So, police, fire, solid waste.
We can certainly have them back. I, just, just so I don't forget, and I'm sure the clerk will write this down, but we want to make sure that we re-invite those specific department heads down for next Tuesday's meeting. If we have that meeting, which apparently it looks like we will be.
Okay. Because Mrs. Sahadi's going to be getting us updated information so that we could continue to ask questions. And if we reject the budget, what happens?
We, so we will re, we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday to rehear the municipal budget presentation, maybe get other information. But at that point, the city council will take action on the, on the budget again. We have the ability at that time and this time to reduce, reject or approve. If for some reason we don't have a resolution to some of the councilors' requests between now and next Tuesday, they will enter FY '22 with a 1/12 budget.
Counselor, that's incorrect. Government would actually close down. If the, if the budget is rejected, then, and Counselor Kadim...
Unless we authorize them to go 1/12 like we did last year.
I don't believe you can. That was because of the emergency that was set by the governor.
Okay. So, then, Mrs. Sahadi's right, then government shuts down. So, what I would urge the administration to do is to contact all of the counselors and see what it is that they will take, what, what it is that, you know, it, it will take to get their support with their valid concerns that they have. Quite frankly, the city councils had their budget since early May. And I don't know if any counselor has been called unless by anybody. Maybe I was just, wasn't there anyone? They said, "Counselor, what is it that will take to get your support on this budget?" None of those conversations were had. We've had the budget for a long time. So, I don't know what to say. I'm sorry I answered your question incorrectly, Counselor, but I thought we would go 1/12. I don't know why we wouldn't be able to, but...
Mr. President, just a point of information. I, I think you just need to request from the DOR approval on a 1/12. You just can't. I think that's what Mrs. Sahadi was, was trying to say. We can't just automatically go to a 1/12. We've got to request it based on the fact that the council has not approved the budget. Then they may or may allow us to go into a 1/12.
It was just, the reason I said that was because it was so easily done last year. So, and I understand it was a COVID year, but I appreciate that. Thank you. Counselor in seat four, you still have the floor.
I'm just reading how to go to a 1/12. Uh, that's all right. I yield.
Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
The ordinance committee is the water. The water never passed.
The ordinance committee, is the water, the water never passed. What's happening with that? Got tabled.
The ordinance committee met last night. The increases to water and sewer did not pass, and the current municipal budget before us does include those rate increases. So it has yet to come out of ordinance.
Same with the salary schedule.
Same with the salary schedule.
What is it?
Same with the salary schedule.
And we did ask last night, and Sahadi, I haven't checked my emails today, did you send the, you said that they've used retained earnings every year?
Yes, I sent that to you this morning.
Okay.
May I ask what the vote was not to send the water to the council?
So even, do you mind?
Two-two.
So do you mind? I just basically wanted to say that even though I wasn't going to vote yes, even though I wasn't going to vote yes to it, I voted to at least take it off the table and bring it to full council, but that also got shot down. So we tried to at least bring it to the full council to try to get it voted on, whether yes or no, but that didn't pass either, so.
So let me just comment on that, if I may, with all due respect. The purpose of our subcommittees is to vet things in those subcommittees. So it frustrates me that we have a subcommittee that was tasked with a role and responsibility to vet it, and it doesn't come out of committee. I mean, I know it's an easy thing to do. Let's just pass it through full council, pass it through with no recommendation, but what good does that do, right? We have our subcommittees for a reason. So I respect the fact that you want...
Well, no. That vote to bring it to full council was after it was voted.
No, no, no. And I get that. I watched that portion of the meeting. I'm just vocalizing my timid frustration on this because the purpose of our subcommittees is to do subcommittee work, and if the committee doesn't want to take a position, what's the point of sending it to the council? Consular in seat seven still has the floor.
Yeah, that's the way I felt. I mean, if you can't get the vote one way or the other, you send it with no recommendation and let it go to full council and see where it goes. Now it's tied up. Must have had at least three meetings, I guess. So, you know, one way or the other, it's the end of the year, and leave it up to us. You know, you don't want to vote for it, don't vote for it, but put it on the floor. I yield.
No problem. I just, again, it was just my own opinion, right? That's all. Nobody has to take personally. Consul, seat eight, Consula Pereira.
And to be fair, Mr. Furlan did bring that down to us, and it was referred to the ordinance committee. He brought that down in April. The ordinance committee meeting in May, it was tabled. Then the following ordinance committee meeting, I came in late. It was the night that they had the meeting at the Corky Row. It was never lifted from the table. And last night, it was two-two, and then we voted to bring it here with no recommendation because now you have to schedule an ordinance committee meeting because this is in the budget, then you've got to go through first reading and second reading. You're not going to get this ordinance passed till July? Madam Clerk, July? So we're already going to be into the budget, already going to be two months into the budget. I was equally as frustrated, Mr. President.
Thank you, Consular.
That I yield.
Thank you. So I got to say, right, I think we all can say we're frustrated, but I believe the ordinance committee was doing their job in asking the administration to do things. And the ordinance committee asked Mr. Furlan and asked the administration questions about looking at user fees and end-user fees and trying to find other ways to look at the water and sewer rate increases. Why is it that the council is put in a corner right now and said, "If you don't approve the budget, if you don't approve the rate increases, the water and sewer department won't get their necessary rate increases?" And that's why I asked at the very first meeting, was there a backup plan put in place should the ordinance committee and the city council not approve rate increases? And it's like, this whole government by putting the legislative body in the corner has to stop. What if the city, like, where is it? Where is the respect? Where is the city council's position? We've got two members of the administration here. The city council ordinance committee specifically asked for members of the administration, Finance, Seamen, and Water Department, their specific needs and what it is that they want, and we were talking about water and sewer rate increases for months, and they're asking things and they're just getting ignored. We're talking about salary rate increases. Consular Kadim, and I watched the meeting last night, Consular Kadim and members of the committee in previous meetings were asking for wage salary schedules for step increases. I know back in 2017, when I chaired the ordinance committee at that time, that we wanted not to exceed, but you know what? Leadership has changed. Councilors have changed. There's a new appetite. And you know what? That was ignored too. So, I mean, you've got to be kidding me. You've got to be kidding me. Consular in seat one, Consula Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if we call it short-term memory loss or long-term memory loss, but now all of a sudden, we're going to start talking about what comes first, the chicken or the egg in terms of water and sewer rates. The last several years since I've been here, we've approved the water rates after the budget, and it's always been the language would be retro to July 1, so we would capture all that. So, you know, the reason that the ordinance committee did not, you know, have a discussion the first couple of times was because we wanted to make sure, number one, that the council had its opportunity, the full council in Finance Committee, to talk about the budget, the water and sewer, because it makes absolutely no sense to approve water rates if this full body is not in favor of that. So then that means we would have an ordinance that would be coming out of ordinance committee to adopt and approve water rates, but when we're having discussion in Finance about the various budgets, if the appetite's not there, then what's the point? Right? So we've done this in the past, right, Madam Clerk? This is not unusual that the water and sewer rates for the ordinances have been passed after the budget.
It happened last year, actually.
The ordinance that passed...
I know it has, right? So, but now all of a sudden, we want to have some type of memory loss and say that that's not the way it's taking place. You folks still have the ability to vote on the budget. It's not tying anybody's hand in terms of whether or not you support the budget or you don't support the budget, whether or not you support water and sewer. You know, at the end of the day, I think that's an important piece for the ordinance committee to understand, number one, is there support for the water rates? Because now if somebody or a majority of the councilors want to vote to reject either water or sewer because of rates, solely due to rates, then we're going to have to rehash the entire conversation all over again, right? If we came on a committee and then we'd have to reject it, refer it back, so from my standpoint, I think we need to have a discussion. We know things are built into the budget. The assumptions were presented to us, right? So we're all cognizant and fully aware of what the administration's budget assumptions were, right? So we get that. We recognize that. So now, I think first, we need to talk about, do we support the budget that's before us? That's where the conversation needs to be had. I mean, if you want ordinance committee to go back and either approve, reject, or send without a recommendation to full council, I mean, we can do that, but it's still going to be the same exact thing.
Right.
Right? So that's just my stance. But in terms of the motion, I mean, I'm going to be supporting the motion. You know, I talked about it at the last meeting, you know, between, you know, the fiscal, the structural deficits that we're seeing, which again is not due solely to this administration, but has been long-term in the fiscal cliff that we're going to be seeing. I think there's a lot of one-time monies that we're utilizing in these budgets, whether it's the general fund or in the enterprise fund. We've got the $4.5 million in OPA revenue. We've got $1.7 million coming from the stabilization account. We've got $1.6 in SOR II monies that are being used for local contribution. We've got about $2 million in the sewer account that's offsetting the rates, which again, in my opinion, if we don't have that money, is really going to increase the sewer rates even more. Same thing with the water and just under $400,000. So I, for one, will be supporting the rejection, but in trying to give the administration some direction as to where to go with the $4.5 million OPA money, you know, I think we can make an argument that the debt exclusion will be able to, I guess, offset some of that money because we'll be having the debt exclusion for DIRFIE coming onboard. We've got the expenses there. But the 1.7, the 1.6, I'd like to see that reduced from the budget to make sure that we've got something that's at least minimizing the structural deficit that we have. In terms of the water and sewer rates, you know, I was probably one of the biggest proponents the last couple of years trying to get those budgets passed. I just think we're using way too much money of retained earnings, and the concern obviously is that, you know, we've had the $2 million. Some of that is coming through because of COVID, whether it's the revenues, and I forget exactly what generated that, whether it was lost revenues or just expenses that weren't being done. But the fact of the matter is, is those two departments are very lean budgets, so, you know, there's really not a whole lot that's going to be left or that we can expect for retained earnings. And we're trying to build in $100,000 into those two accounts to try to build up our stabilization account. And I just personally think that, you know, it's just fiscally irresponsible for us to continue to use these one-time monies and throw some additional, you know, OPA monies in there and expect that we're going to be able to sustain this in the long term. So, you know, I'm not saying that we reduce completely the $2 million. I think we need to get it to something that we feel is a little bit more sustainable in terms of what we can anticipate for retained earnings to be rolled into the revenue accounts for both sewer and water. In terms of the expense side, you know, I think there's a number of different areas that we can talk about, but I'd leave that to the administration. I think there are a lot of different positions that we're looking to get back into from FY20. You know, I think some of those need to be scaled back. I think, you know, we just need to really start looking at the affordability aspect of this. And while I understand and appreciate that departments are understaffed, undermanned, there are things that we need to really look at. You know, we have the planner here who said he hasn't even looked at the bill schedule because he doesn't supposedly have time. You know, and I know some of my colleagues disagree, but I think, you know, a city engineer is not needed. I think you can have a number of consultants that are onboard that's zero cost to the city that would provide the exact same services that we have a city engineer for and minimize our overhead costs associated with that. You know, and I can go on, but I think my biggest concern really to try to get me to support this budget is the reduction of the one-time monies, and I'm not saying that we reduce all of it. You know, I think we need to at least look at the 1.7, the 1.6, which was the staff funds and the SOR II, and definitely reduce or minimize, you know, the $2 million in sewer and roughly $400,000 in the water department. So that's where I stand on the budget.
Thank you. You yield, Consul. Consul, seat eight, Consula Pereira. Consul, seat eight.
No, I didn't have anything to say. It was Consula...
My apologies. Consul, seat seven, Consula Pelletier.
You know, go back to the water. To me, Police Department, Fire Department, very important, and next to nothing. I mean, you've got the water. You have clean water lines. We're working on that. You need the chemicals. You need the workers, and if we cut, and we cut, I know it's tough to do, but do we want to jeopardize everything with the water system? Is it the case where we don't go up and he's going to lose workers? And they could come down from Boston and say, "Hey, you guys can't do this. You've got to maintain the waters, and that's what you've got to do." So, you know, he's not here to answer any questions, but I think it's very, very important that we don't mess with the water. Leave it alone. Leave it clean. Leave it flow. What would happen if they shut off the water for two days down here? No water. You just try it out. Don't take a bat. Can't flush the toilet. You can't make coffee. It's very, very important. You can go without food maybe a week. You can't go out without water. It's important. We should have it, good water. And, you know, the city's come a long way with the water, but again, we've got to maintain it, got to keep it. We don't want to jeopardize our water because we don't want to raise the rate. We want to raise the rate to make sure we have good quality water. That's what it's all about. So, I mean, we have to take the vote. If we take the vote not to raise the water, then there's a problem. He's going to adjust everything. We talked about it last week. He's going to have to go through the whole thing, but it's important to have it, and if it's going to go up, it's going to go up. That's it. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Consular. Consul, seat eight, Consula Pereira.
No, I'll only add that I know that there's new positions in the budget or vacant positions that are going to be filled, and nobody wants to put additional money in there. I think we're in a good spot with having some OPA money that'll be able to help us out, what have you, and I think it should help us out for long-range, you know, picking on things that are going to be around for a long time. But every single department that came down here said they were short-staffed. We're going to take people out of the budget now? We're never going to get where we need to be. That's my feelings on it. I don't want to see a lot of this money going in, but luckily, we have it to be able to utilize this year and just, people need help. You listen to Nancy tonight from PAX. How many people she had, and people were questioning, "Oh, well, you know, you need more people." Look at the one mechanic she's got that's fixing everything, even going to different departments and helping out. They need the support. They need the backup. It's needed. It's needed. You've got one electrician at the police department, one, with all of what he has to take care of. I mean, it's in every single department that, you know, we've had that. I don't like spending extra money into it either, but I think that the residents want the service, but we need to have people who are able to service, and I don't think that we have that. And this year, if we have the opportunity to put some people in, retirees and that are leaving, you've got to backfill. You're getting to a position, you have so few people in departments, that if one person leaves, let's say that Bill Kenny hit the mega bucks and moved to Hawaii. Who knows everything that he's working on? Nobody. Nobody. And I think that, you know, when Nancy talks about younger people worked, when we all had the PAX, I remember that, and then people left and new people came onboard, they knew what was happening. You don't have that now. So with that, I yield. Mr. McCoy, were you trying to say something to me?
Well, I just wanted to, if I may, I mean, there's so many issues that were just thrown about, but, I mean, I can tell you this, that when these department heads, whether it's my experience here in the past or just getting here now, when these department heads stop working on these budgets, as all of you know, they're not coming up with a gold, a silver, and a bronze. I mean, they are coming here with what they need. In the past, and let's go right back to Paul Furlan. I mean, we know if he's asking for stuff for capital items, he needs them. We've always wanted to work toward, moving toward moderate rate increases. I don't know how you can get more moderate than what he's proposed, especially when we're talking about the importance of water and sewer. You know, I understand, and there's always a reluctance in raising fees, raising taxes. I get it. I get it. And I credit this committee for doing their research and being concerned about public tax dollars. But again, we're not, this isn't something that you can compare to the household trash fee that came under a prior administration. I mean, this is something for necessary utilities. We know that he's struggling. He's down three licensed professionals at the water department. He has worked midnight to eight, and we're worried about an increase in the bills that's $10 and change at a single-family home. Now, I owned property for 21 years. I cover the bills now at my father's property, so I'm not poo-pooing these increases. But again, you know, he is trying to insert one-time money to avoid less moderate rate increases. You know, and I think that needs to be said. I mean, we know that the guy couldn't have a better mentor than Terry Sullivan, who we all have respect for, who, by the way, we've had to summon back out of retirement to help us with our water situation. And as far as the other areas, I can just say generally, I couldn't get over when I came back in here on May 20th and how lean it so many of the departments were. Now, I don't know what happened over the past couple of years, but planning needs Now, I don't know what happened over the past couple of years, but planning needs folks, code enforcement needs folks, IT desperately needs bodies. Whether we want to call, you know, IT... I talked to the director of IT today because it's been so difficult filling the position of network coordinator because we have other folks who interview and they're able to stay at home and get, make $20,000 more than what we're offering. You know, you could add a network administrator and an IT specialist with the amount of tickets they handle and the various duties that they do, plus all that happens behind the scenes in keeping cybersecurity. So, again, you know, I'm just saying, I think you've got a solid budget in front of you. Some of the things that you may want decreased, I mean, I understand that a council typically votes the appropriation. It's typically not an online item review. The folks who are more schooled in municipal finance can correct me on that. I mean, if there are some reductions that you would like to make, more than happy to work with the council on that. But I don't think you've got a willy-nilly pie-in-the-sky budget here. Again, these departments come and they come, the department heads come to Mrs. Sahadi and the administration prior to me getting here, you know, and they're putting in what their needs are. If I also can mention, I believe the oppo money was deposited within the last three weeks? Okay. So, there, we have a representative of the council on that panel, which I'm assuming other councillors are going to send questions to the council representative. We have another oppo panel meeting scheduled Friday. It's been set here several, and I believe the third one is going to be more of a public type of meeting, whether we utilize a school or a gym, to get some of the general public's ideas and just sit there and really take suggestions, to be honest with you, because I think it's, you know, it's a wise thing to do. But as you know, a lot of these rules have not been clarified. So, if we, every idea that has come into play, some of what you folks have represented here over the short time that I've been here are under consideration for that oppo money. But you still, there hasn't been a final rule applied and there's still a lot of gray areas. I just got an email today that for two days next week, I believe it's MMA, that's putting on Zoom meetings. And they have metropolitan centers that are above a certain population, below a certain population, getting over $5 million and getting less than $5 million. So, this is still a work in process. The state can't tell you how they're allocating all of their $5 billion. We would be sending piecemeal, piecemeal on a budget that went to print in the end of April. You'd be getting bombarded with inserts and this potential idea, but we're not sure if it's totally green-lighted yet. We're not told if it's, you know, if we've got full justification to be able to use it this way in eligibility. You know, clearly, I'd like to explore some of the items that both Consul Peckham and Consul Lee has brought up earlier tonight. But again, you need to get, you need to get through, you know, you... We're in a really good financial position right now. You're only going to be in a better financial position down the road. Fall River is going to have more money than they've ever had in the history, other than maybe the 1920s before the crash. You know, so I just want to throw that out there. I mean, I think you've got a sound budget and you're in a good, the city's in a good financial condition as we speak. To me, I don't know how to say this plainly, I think you've got one more difficult budget here. If you, and I'm not even, you know, I can, I'm, from the consternation I'm getting back from all of the chairs cumulatively, I don't necessarily think it's a difficult budget. There's some areas that you want, and I agree with you on the $100,000, again, spot on. I think that was something, again, that was created by an individual who's no longer here. But your budgets going forward are going to be much clearer and much easier because that oppo money is going to relieve a variety of errors that are just, a variety of areas that are just not nailed down yet. So, I'm sorry, Consul, for going a little long, but I felt that that needed to be said because some of the comments that have come out.
And I will just add to that, the $1.6 million of stabilization is all for capital. So, we're not trying to use, we're not trying to bond for it. We're not trying to add additional costs to the taxpayers, meaning adding additional interest because once we bond for it, we now pay back the principal and the interest. So, because we're continuing to have the $9 million balance in a stabilization fund, that $1.6 million is strictly capital. The schedule is included in your budget book so that you can see that. You don't have to add each of the departments up, but I can assure you that if you add up every department that has capital, it equals that $1.6 million. And to Mr. McCoy's point, you know, certainly if you have an area that you're not happy with, you can reduce the budget. But at this particular point, and I understand Mr. Kadim or Consul Kadim's points with regard to his concerns, but quite frankly, the only way to reduce and eliminate either the oppo money or even the SO2 money that is coming from the school department is to take out the vacant positions. Because at that point, we can take out, you know, all of the so-called additional personnel costs, but I believe that's about $60,000 or maybe $170,000 if we add the two categories together. But the $1.6 million is strictly capital. So, we would have to remove all the capital. And I know it's been the will of this council to be putting capital in the budget on an annual basis. You just heard from the police, the fire chief this evening, and actually the police chief. They both have capital in their budget that they've been asking for, for years, that we have not had the opportunity or the ability even to put in the budget. And so, this year, because, as Ms. McCoy just pointed out, we're in a good financial position, it was time to shore up some of these departments and give them the assets that they need to run their departments. Mrs. Smith, the seasonal workers, I mean, if we need to go back and strip this budget down to the nitty-gritty, those are the kinds of expenses that will have to be cut from the budget. I mean, there is no other way to go because Ms. McCoy is correct. I mean, all of these departments are at the bare minimum. I mean, yes, maybe we don't need an engineer. Maybe Consul Kadim is correct. Maybe we can add some fees. We have been trying to work with the departments with regard to fee structures. And it's a difficult process, particularly in light of the fact that they are so short in staff. It's hard to have... Mr. Hathaway, you all heard from him. You know what he does on a daily basis. For him to be able to put together a fee structure to start coming down, to make changes to building fees, it's a big task. And he's busy. He's busy every day. And that's no excuse. I agree. But we don't have the staffing in some of these departments to help the division managers or the department heads to get ahead. And each and every one of them come to work every day and work very hard. And they really don't have any excess monies, if you will, in their budgets. And they all try to work within their budgets in order to close their fiscal year, which is why when you look at where your shortfalls might be this year, we're talking about two departments that had retro pay, which we certainly knew about very early on. And then we have a third department, which is solid waste, which Mr. Perry has talked about at a number of these meetings. Snow and ice allowable account to be overspent. And then certainly, I believe the last one that we did talk about was the law department. But honestly, that's a division within a department and a transfer may not actually even be needed for that particular department. But that was provided to you in full transparency that there are some expenditures that Attorney Rumsley has discussed that are unique to this fiscal year and maybe going into the next fiscal year. The number of cases the city of Fall River is having to defend right now is probably the highest number of cases that it's had in years. And so, I understand your feeling. I hear what you're saying in a sense of rejecting the budget. But honestly, I mean, Mr. McCoy and I and the mayor will have to have a conversation tomorrow, but I don't know how prudently it would be to come back to you with another budget other than the one you have in front of you to actually be able to provide the residents of the city the services that they need.
Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi. One final point. I know police is near and dear to your heart.
Public safety in general.
Public safety, public safety, law enforcement.
The city of Fall River.
And the city in general. But I know in particular, because of conversations we've had, we don't, you know, again, we've got to be... I understand we've got to be careful with the one-time money and the oppo money, but we certainly want to do whatever we can in the realm of public safety. We're aware right now that we don't even, the city itself doesn't even fund the entire police department on its own budget. We're getting assistance from housing. You get assistance from the schools and SROs. We don't even completely fund our own police.
Well, that's been going on for years.
Forever, forever.
Yeah.
Forever. But my point is that we definitely, obviously, you want as much oppo money to go to public safety where you do get into trouble as if we try to, you know, you start putting all of that into salaries, now you're adding to the potential structural deficits. But, you know, we have not, we, I mean, you could argue that in the past, for years, I don't mean this, Consul. I mean, for years, we haven't even fully funded our own police force.
Now, since I was addressed, I was, I did ask for the floor prior. I agree. And I also agree that water is a big issue. We all sat here and agree, right, that water is an important topic within the city of Fall River. And we keep mentioning oppo money. The three of us are on this committee. I'm going to go on record by asking you, Mrs. Sahadi, do we know if the oppo funds... Well, actually, we don't know specifically what the oppo funds can be spent on, but if they could go to water, it'd be fantastic, correct?
If they could, but I'm actually, the mayor of Framingham was one of the speakers today. And she is actually fortunate that her water and sewer departments are within their general fund, so she is going to be able to use it for loss revenue.
Okay.
In our instance, it's an enterprise fund, so we will not be able to, based on the frequently asked questions as they are currently presented through June 17th.
Okay. The reason I bring that up is all three of us are in that room. Mr. Furlan sat before us in that meeting with that white binder in front of him. We were all allowed to speak except for him. And if he did speak, please, either one of you, right now, in a nutshell, tell me what he said. Because what he was told was, we know what you want, Paul, we can move on. And then we went to Mr. McCoy.
But he's done reports.
I don't care. I'm on that committee. I want to know what he has to say. So, I find it very disrespectful, but a department head who sat there with a prepared binder was skipped over and then you were allowed to ask your questions.
He...
But I'm on that committee, Mr. McCoy.
Can I respond to you?
Yes, but can I finish?
Sure.
You may know the information. Mrs. Sahadi might know the information. I didn't. So, as a person sitting on this committee, appointed as the oversight on behalf of the city council, I would have appreciated to hear what Mr. Furlan had to say. Good, bad, or indifferent, I would have liked for him to have been able to speak. I, again, found it very disrespectful that he was told, we all know what you want, Paul, let's move on. That's what was said by the mayor.
Consul, if it was...
There could be a million excuses, but I'm telling you, Mr. McCoy.
What was said at the beginning of that meeting is everything that Consul Furlan though was going to bring up is eligible.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Furlan.
But Mr. Furlan should have had the right, okay. But I still want to know what he wants to allocate these funds on. I'm sitting on this committee. I am the oversight on behalf of the council. So, when he got passed, it's disrespectful. He took the time out of his day, prepared a binder, the same one he sat there when he was giving us his budget report. He wanted to give items to us in the oppo committee meeting that were in that same binder. I wanted to know what he had to say. You may have all know, knew what he wanted to say, but I didn't. The people from Liberty Utilities, they probably didn't have an idea. There were other people in that room that probably didn't know what Mr. Furlan wanted to propose.
When you expressed that concern, he forwarded you the email. So, again, I think the apology is probably owed to you.
No, the apology is owed to the city of Fall River. I'm a city councillor appointed to a committee, Mr. McCoy, as the oversight of the funding that is spent. Am I not, is that not my purpose on this committee, Mr. Council President?
You're appointed by the council president.
Yes, as oversight on behalf of the council to make sure that the oppo funding is spent correctly, okay? Mr. Furlan, can we all agree here that he was skipped over? Can we, can we not? Yes, he was.
And when you expressed your dismay, he emailed you the projects that he had approached the administration.
Okay, two, three days later. What good does that do me if I stopped a meeting?
Again, so that's why I think...
Now, let me ask you this. Do I just stop going because he's going to email me? Everybody's now just going to...
Raise your hand and say, hey, I have the floor.
I have the floor, I have the floor. Okay? I, listen, I have the floor.
Did you mention at that meeting you wanted to hear what Mr. Furlan had to say?
I was, I was, listen, after everything that was going on in that meeting, I was in absolute shock, okay? And we all know what happened. Let's not sit here and pretend. And I yield with that, Mr. President.
You did not ask you to speak at that meeting.
Due to the quorum, I'm going to respect the gavel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consul in seat one, Consul Kadim.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, just listening to the administration's rebuttal, what I heard several times is that we're in good financial position. With that, I heard that while we're in good financial position, we're also going to receive more money than we've received in a very long time. That money is one-time money. Then I heard if we're going to reduce the one-time money, we're going to be reducing reoccurring expenses. So, that would tell me we're not in good financial position. Then I heard that we don't even fund our police department appropriately. We have to rely on other entities to help us fully fund our police department, which would suggest that we're not in good financial position. Our educational and government local aid accounts for 50% of our revenue. That would also suggest that we're reliant on state aid, which would also suggest that we're not in a good financial position. Our revenue numbers, taxes increased by two and a half with the new growth, as I mentioned last week, 5.2%. Local receipts are at negative 0.7%. Local aids at three and a half. Schools are getting 6%. Pension expenses, 6.3%. That's more than any other revenue that we're generating. Our compensation, so wages, 7.3%. Debt service, 7.1%. Education was at 14%. So, clearly, our expenses are exceeding our revenue, which would suggest that we're not in a good financial position. The fact that we're becoming reliant on $72 million of one-time money would suggest that, and that's all we've been hearing all year, is that, well, we're going to get a handout from the federal government yet again, right? And what does that mean? That just means we're creating more structural deficits. So, that doesn't suggest that we're in a good financial position. So, I think it's a little misleading to suggest we're in a good financial position when everything I just stated would indicate that we're not in a good financial position. In terms of the water and sewer, I'm not suggesting that we reject the water and sewer or that we make layoffs because I agree. I think those departments are lean. However, the problem we're running into is that we're not doing our fiscal duty to ensure that the taxpayers or the ratepayers are seeing progressive increases, right? Because now what we've got is $2 million. So, when we don't have the $2 million, as opposed to the kicking and screaming that we see for 7%, I mean, a 7 cent increase or a 10 cent increase, is going to be more than a dollar, right? I think it was, I forget exactly what Mr. Furlan said.
86 cents.
It was 86 cents, right? So, that is a significant increase. All I am suggesting is that at some point, we don't want to raise rates and things like that, but we need to do it conservatively to make sure that the impact in a couple of years when we don't have this money is not really felt by the end user. That's the only thing. And I think if we go back to, you know, Mr. Sullivan, I mean, Mr. Sullivan would tell any of us, the only reason he included retained earnings was because there was no political appetite to increase the rates. So, he had to build in order to get a budget passed, the use of retained earnings or one-time monies into his budget. Otherwise, he wouldn't make that suggestion. His suggestion would be to raise the rates to cover the expenses so that it was sustainable. That's all I'm looking for, as one councillor. That's all I'm looking for. And I am not making an argument or I'm not suggesting that we can correct the structural deficit that has been built up for some time. What we can't do is we can't continue to add to it. That's my concern. We're doing exactly what we did with the pension system. When it's convenient, we kick the can down the road. And then when it comes time and we've got to pay for it, we all look at each other and say, how did we get here? Well, we got here because we all made decisions to kick the can down the road. And I say, we, not any of us here, but the people that were in these seats before us kicked the can down the road because it was an affordability issue and they didn't want to make the tough decisions. So, while, yes, I agree that we need positions, but why are we going to add new positions just to lay them off in two years and then have, you know, unemployment costs and all this other stuff or try to figure out how we're going to generate one-time monies? It needs to be sustainable. And all I'm suggesting is that it's not sustainable. And the fact that we can't cut 1.6 and we can't cut, I forget exactly what else it was, the 1.7, would suggest that that in itself, and it has to come from salaries, means that it's not being spent on one-time monies. So, a structural deficit is being created even more. So, that's where I'm at. That's where I'm moving. I spoke as to what I want to see in order to get it reduced. We can't reduce these things because I'm not looking to make a decision as to whether or not we're reducing police. We're reducing fire. We're reducing community services. I think it's incumbent upon the administration to give us that recommendation. I mean, if we're going to have to make cuts, then at some point, we'll vote on that. But what I'd like to see is the administration go back and try to really streamline this a little bit more in terms of trying to reduce the one-time monies that are in this budget and the water and sewer budget as well. in the water and sewer budget as well. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further comment, Counselor Lee, Counselor C. Five.
I had my hand raised. You acknowledged it before.
Counselor in seat five.
Okay, sorry. Just, just, just to make a point, I've been looking at the old budget and the new budget, and even in FY '20, I'm looking at, I'm just looking at increases that, every year, every single year, the budget gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And we get to see people come up, hat in hand, tell everyone how lean we are, don't have enough money for this, don't have enough money for that. But we, we went up 10 million, we went up 9.7 million, again, these numbers are always revised, so I'm just going by what I'm reading. Went up from FY '20 to '21, we went up 9.7 million. And then FY '21 to '22, we went up 16.7 million in the total, you know, total general fund. So, I think what people are generally upset by and just tired of seeing is, we're, every single year, we don't have enough money for anything, we don't have enough money for services, we don't have, we're underfunded, we're under budget, we're under this, that, and the other. I remember DCM, when I went to visit the DCM about a year and a half ago, they were telling me how they had over 100 people. Now they're down to like, less than 40 now. And yet, the budget still keeps increasing. So, we continually have, you know, we continually see this, this dynamic, and no one's lying. The budgets are, you know, the staffs are understaffed, and I've been upstairs and downstairs, and I know that there's not a lot of people in a lot of these offices and things like that. However, it still gets more expensive. It gets more expensive every single year. So, we're getting shorter or we're getting more lean, but the budget still keeps increasing. I mean, that's really what we keep on seeing. So, there's obviously something wrong. There's probably something wrong structurally. Maybe, maybe it's, maybe it's the incremental raises or things like that, whatever it is. But it's hard for me to sit here, and I know how, I know the city, I love the city too, Chris, there's, it's hard for me to sit here and say, "Oh, yeah, I'm going to raise everything, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for a budget that raises almost $17 million," and then, and then still claim that the, you know, that, that everything's fine, that we have enough to cover this, that, and the other, when we, when we really don't. I, it's kind of scary to see how expensive this budget really could be, if you really put everything down that you really wanted in this budget, to be honest with you. I just think it's too expensive, at the end of the day. That's really what it comes down to. So, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Yeah, when I made the motion to reject the budget, I didn't say a word about adding personnel or adding positions. Never came out of my mouth. What I said was, I brought up that $100,000 line item that Counselor in seat six-
Six.
-expanded on, but under other personnel costs, which is the theme that has come up over and over and over in this past week, is $822,966. That if you add that $100,000 line item, it's $922,966. It's a big number. And I think some of that can be reduced, which would reduce some of the numbers that Counselor in seat one-
What line item was that?
I just went through this whole budget book and added up every personnel-
Other personnel services?
Other personnel costs. I just added every single one up, $822,966. Everywhere from a $2,000 raise to a $7,500 raise. Some of these raises I do not agree with, some I would agree with, but that's beside the point. It's over $800,000. And if you add the $100,000 line item to it, it's over $900,000. That has nothing to do with not allowing people to have more staff in their offices, because those are line items separate and apart from that, I believe. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counselor Pelletier.
All right, I'm all set.
Okay, very good. Any other, Mrs. Sahadi?
Yes, please, thank you. So, and I, and I understand, and I, and I did provide you with that schedule, which I did not bring with me this evening, but I can certainly look at it. But so that we wouldn't have the same issue that we had this year with the retros, over $450,000 of those other personnel costs are included in our public safety departments because, again, we have contract negotiations that is still ongoing for superiors, and we have the patrol back at the table. And so, certainly, we included those amounts in this budget so that we would be able to fund, or at least partially fund, if we couldn't totally fund, any increases in those particular departments as a result of the ongoing labor negotiations. I mean, if it's the will of this council to cut that, then they can certainly cut those amounts or reduce those amounts in each of these departments as they vote on the appropriation. And that is also true for the $100,000 in facilities. I mean, they can certainly take the facilities, it's actually a department that stands on its own, so reduce the total expenditures by $100,000, as opposed to rejecting the budget.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, there's a roll call on rejecting the municipal budget. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
LaLaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
No.
Pereira?
No.
President Ponti?
Yes, and I just want to point out for the record that, as I indicated in the beginning of the meeting, Counselor Kilby is unable to attend here today. He really wished he could be here, but he is, there was a death in his family, and he is comforting his family at this time, so I want to again, once again, repeat that. Is there a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor-
Second.
Oh, I am sorry, there's a transfer before us. I'm sorry, I have that. Mrs. Sahadi, the transfer briefly?
I'm sorry. Um, let's see if I can find. The transfer is the $100,000 that this council requested, that Mr. Ferlin put into his enterprise fund last year, and so he's looking to transfer it to his water enterprise fund.
Questions?
Nope.
Hearing none. That's in full counsel, Madam Clerk, or do we need to refer it?
It is in full counsel.
It is in full counsel. Hearing no further discussion on this item specifically, motion to adjourn finance made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Pelletier. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. For the city council meeting, we now call to order, Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kadim?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
LaLaby LaBeau?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
And President Ponti?
Here. If everybody in the chamber can please rise for a moment of silent prayer, and once again, I ask you to keep Counselor Kilby and his family in your prayers.
Could I also request that we keep former colleague of ours, Mike Lund, and his mom, who also passed away-
Yes, thank you.
-in the week of tomorrow.
Yes, tomorrow morning, thank you. Thank you. And a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised of such recordings. All transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We're going to go into our regular full counsel agenda prior to going into executive session this evening. Madam Clerk.
The first matter on the agenda is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Joseph Pereira to the Board of Appeals.
Motion to confirm has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Mr. President, we have the other two appointments for the Port Authority. Those haven't come down, but the state has a board there and the city has a board. And I believe there's a contract that needs to be discussed and signed, and the city needs to get people there, because the state won't do it.
Right.
So, just a heads up on that.
Thank you. Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President.
So, I had spoke to the president of the board, Mr. Olivera, and there was members on the board, the mayor had removed them to replace them with the folks that are in front of us, whenever those come back. But that contract, it has not been voted on, but it's been adopted anyway, and they're probably two months into a four-month contract right now.
No, but there's another contract that they need to sign. At least, that's what Mr. Viola said, so you might want to double-check. And I don't think the mayor took someone off, I thought Kara O'Connor resigned.
She did, because she wasn't happy, but then two other people were taken off, so one of those is in charge.
So, just, just, just layer this up.
Well, why don't you check into that, Mr. President?
So, we have a resolution that was filed and adopted by the council to have a presentation on what the Point Authority does and its purpose. That was the consensus of the council. I also advised the mayor this week, or last week, when we were preparing the agenda, that it was the will of this council to have a, a letterhead, very brief summary about why you're appointing the individual. I sent him a communication requesting that, I think he's going to follow through on that, but we're not going to put the item on the agenda at this point until we can get that presentation by the administration. Next order of business.
The presentation, not the cover letter.
Well, both.
Because personally, I don't need a cover letter, I have the resume, and the resume has a phone number and it has an email. I've called people that got, you know, I mean, I emailed with Joe Pereira even. That's what I tend to do, I don't know what everybody else does, but I contact them. Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
The next matter is the appropriation order, that the sum of $100,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to the water fund stabilization from the water fund free cash.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
We have the, another request from the mayor and an order regarding an easement located at 81 Greenleaf Street.
Refer to Real Estate Committee.
Motion to refer to the Real Estate Committee made by Counselor Kadim. I am going to be abstaining from this. Roll call.
On referral to the Real Estate Committee, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
LaLaby LaBeau?
Abstain.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Abstain. Next order of business?
The next order of business is the communication from the mayor and an order regarding the members of the Board of Park Commissioners and their designation as special municipal employees.
Motion to reject, discussion.
Motion to reject made by Counselor Kadim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion? Counselor in seat one, Counselor Kadim.
So, I'm just a little curious as to why, and I seen the email in there, why the park board, because it's not individual-based, but it's assigned to, special municipal employees are assigned to the position itself. So, I'm just curious as to why the Forver Park Board needs to be a special municipal employee. And then I also noted in the email, it has to do with two housing authority members. My other question would be whether or not the CFO is a special municipal position, and if, if not, why is the CFO allowed to be on the housing authority board and be the CFO if an employee of the housing authority is not allowed to be on a city board? So, that's, that's one question. And I'd also would like a full encompassing, I guess, analysis of what boards need to be designated or should be designated as special municipal as opposed to individual. But I know this specific request, that just, that there's some questions that arise, because I know the CFO is, is on the housing authority board, so with that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, Counselor Deion.
Yeah, I know that a complaint was filed with the Ethics Commission. The Ethics Commission came, rendered an opinion. It was determined that these, these two positions were in violation of the ethics, the, sorry, conflict of interest law. So, I go back to the same comment I made yesterday, when we were talking about the salaries not to exceed, you know, salaries not to exceed. The salaries exceed ordinance, so we, so we're expected to adjust ordinance to suit the salaries. Now, we have two individuals, doesn't matter who they are, it's not the person, it's the positions. These positions violate the conflict of interest law. Now, they want us to change the designation so that the designation fits the, the positions. So, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm kind of getting tired of, instead of following the law and following ordinances, people always want us to change the ordinances and change designations to accommodate what people want at a given moment. And that is not how business should be conducted, and that is my objection to this, and why I will be supporting the motion to reject. And also, I'm not finding it right now, but in, within, there's a letter in here where it stated that if the council, basically, and I'm going to paraphrase, if the council follows what these people want and votes accordingly, all is well. But if we don't do what these people, what's, what's asked for, then we'll find out what their next move is going to be. Well, I don't know why an outside entity is even putting that type of language in a letter, because they want us to change, to make something that's not legal, legal, just for whoever's purpose. And with that, I yield.
Counselor in seat four, Counselor Vice President.
Yes, so I had reached out, because there is, there seems to be a response to a complaint and an opinion rendered, so I had reached out to Madam Clerk and asked for, one, the definition of special employee, and two, if we had a copy of the complaint or opinion. I know she, complaint and opinion, and I know she sent me the definition of special municipal employee, but it would be helpful to have the whole picture rather than just the response. So, I'm not sure, they're clearly responding to something, but I'd like to be able to read that, to know what it is.
We did not receive a copy of the complaint.
Or whatever the state ethics had put out that made them do this.
We, we only received communication from the housing authority's attorney indicating what had taken place, but we did not receive copies of any of that material.
Okay, so we only really have half the picture, and it would be nice to have the whole picture. I yield.
Any further? Motion to reject has been made and seconded, roll call.
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
LaLaby LaBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Object.
No further objection. Hearing no further objections, next order of business.
Item number five is a communication from the Human Resources Director regarding the June 8th city council meeting.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file made by Consul Akadeem, seconded by Consul Pereira. Discussion. Consul in seat one, Consul Akadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I received this letter from the Human Resource Director on June 8th, 2021, at which point I told her to make sure she forwarded it over to the City Council so we could accept and place on file. I'm going to maintain what I've said before. I think the, quite frankly, the, the accusation is frivolous at best. What led to the, to the comment of that is such a lie, again, was the fact that the statement that was made, that we only do year-end transfers, and then also part of that letter was about 10 or 11 appropriation transfer orders that, that came down, which were just year-end. Going back to 2016, I found 46 transfers that appeared on, on the council agendas and that came down for appropriations and transfers for the, for the City Council. A statement was also made that overrides were allowed, and I did request from Corporation Council and the administration a legal opinion as to whether Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, was violated by the, the administration, at which point I did receive confirmation that 40, uh, Chapter 44, which is the finance law, was not being followed, in particular with the fact that an appropriation was exceeded by the vote of the City Council. And then also Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 150E, which pertains to the collective bargaining, was also in violation, because once we voted on, on the collective bargaining agreements that were in place, there were 30 days or 90 days. I forget exactly how many days it was, but I believe it's 30 days, that the administration had, was required to come down to the City Council for an appropriation. So, you know, that is really the extent of what transpired. And quite frankly, I mean, it was a public meeting, so, you know, folks can watch the meeting and see what was stated, how it was stated. And, and, and quite frankly, I, I take, I take exceptions to the fact that, you know, several other councils also agreed and said the similar things that I said, just in a different manner. And I guess I'm, I'm the only one that was either creating a hostile work environment or, or being a bully. So I just want to get that on the record. I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat four, Consul Vice President.
Thank you. So I think the other piece to this, and I had, this is some of the emails that I sent to, to the mayor and one to Corporation Council, none of which have received a response, is, you know, at the end of the day, we're elected. So if someone, you know, if someone feels that they are being bullied, then, you know, they should do what they need to do. But the, the city is funding this. No matter what the investigation comes up with, what are they going to do with a piece of paper? They could say, Consul in seat one is the most horrible person in the world. Okay, great. Where are we going to put that? It's the, it's the residents that vote. And I feel like since it's, my council might agree or disagree, but, but since that, it's a little bit awkward in here, because we, most of us are, before we get upset about something, we're kind of apologizing first, and we should be able to say, you know, what, what the reality is. And if this is going to happen, if, if things get heated on the council floor, as they often do, especially over the last few years, this is setting a precedent, that is the city now going to pay for investigations into a public meeting to the tune of $10,000? Anytime a, a city employee gets upset, I mean, I mean, Leo's been upset with Mr. Perry how many times over East Main Street. We're just, we're setting a precedent that the, the city shouldn't be funding this, simply because what are they going to do with whatever that investigation comes up with? And I've asked that question. What's the end game? What, what can you do with that? You can't dock pay. You can't fire him, or anybody, any of us, him or her. So I've asked that question three times, and I've not received a response. That I yield.
I'll say something.
Thank you. Consul in seat eight.
I think my colleague in seat number four is correct. They're not going to be able to do anything. But the city would be liable if they didn't do anything. That's the bottom line, because I, we've had this, when I worked at the DA's office, this came up, and really nothing could be done. But for that individual, if you don't look into the matter, you can be held liable. That's why. With that, I yield. That's my understanding.
Thank you. I'm just going to make my comment. I mean, I, I, I'm not going to yield a waiver from the comment that I made to start of the last meeting. I mean, I feel that we have a role and responsibility as a body to ask questions. Sometimes they're tough questions. Sometimes people get passionate. But we have that responsibility. That's what the voters elected us to do. And, and I made a comment in the email, and I'll stand by my comment, that I stand with the counselor who was asking a question. It was holding people accountable. And that, and I maintain that position, which is Consul Akadeem.
Move on.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number six is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment.
Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment. Second. Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment made by Consul Pereira, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the proposed ordinance on the Flood Plains District for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion so made. Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Consul Pereira, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item eight is the proposed ordinance regarding structures on or over a public way, also for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion so made. Motion to pass through second reading and enrollment has been made by Consul Pereira, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas there have been numerous complaints regarding traffic in the area of Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School, and whereas there are no sidewalks or crosswalks in this area causing students to walk in the street, and whereas this is, there is a great amount of traffic in the morning and afternoon when students are traveling to and from school. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the Director of Traffic, Director of Community Maintenance, Administrative Community Utilities, and Representatives of Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School to discuss improvements that can be made to improve public safety for the students and residents.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Has been made by Consul Pereira, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. The sponsor of the resolution, Consul in seat eight, Consul Pereira.
Consul Peckham and I have spoken about this. We have a, one of the neighbors that live there, that's constantly emailing all of us regarding traffic and this and that. So if the, you know, Committee on Public Safety could have a meeting at Diamond or at the Water Department there, they have one. Let some neighbors come and see what we can figure out for the beginning of the school year.
Thank you, Consul. Consul in seat six, Consul Peckham.
I do agree with you.
Yeah.
It's been an ongoing, we've received on, ongoing emails since the beginning of this tenure on the council. There was a traffic study done there by the Florida Motor Unit. I have the study that they did. I do think it is about time that it does come before public safety, and we can, again, remedy the issue. So therefore, all topics are addressed, and the individual that contacts me and Consul Pereira can be satisfied with what the council and the Public Safety Committee did to address his issues. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Whereas upgrades are being made to government center to address barriers to accessibility, and whereas the city of Fall River received a municipal ADA improvement grant to fund these capital improvements, and whereas more improvements are needed throughout the city of Fall River, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Human Services, Housing, Youth and Elder Affairs convene the Chair of the Commission on Disability to discuss upgrades and improvements that are needed throughout the city, and be it further resolved that the City Council President consider appointing a City Council Liaison to the Commission on Disability.
Motion to adopt?
Motion made.
Made by Consul Peckham, seconded by Consul Lee. Discussion.
Well, I, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, she, she's, uh...
Did you second it? I'm sorry. I thought I-
It's okay. Yeah, I'll second.
Made by, seconded by Consul Lee. Discussion. Sponsor of the resolution, Consul in seat eight, Consul Pereira.
I had received the call from a contact with Dennis Paselli, who's the Chairman of the Commission on Disabilities. He had heard the previous meeting with the $100,000, and he said that that was to redo some of the things in City Hall, like the room downstairs that needed to be done. The, and, and I think he also said that every year we can apply for grants, it's not every two years, but felt that it would be beneficial if he had a member of the council as a liaison to his, to the Disability Commission, which probably, if it's going to the Committee on Health and Human Service and Elder, Youth and Elder Affairs, possibly Counselor Dion. But that way, he would feel that there's somebody there to listen, and that would go through her committee, what have you. But at least to meet with them and see what the barriers are, and I thought that, we talked about it with the clerk, like what committee would this go to, and it's, you know, Elder and Youth Affairs and Human Service aspect, so whatever committee to go to. But there, there are things that they want to see done, and little by little, every year they're doing a few. And it's a great, you know, it's a good committee with people. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Consul in seat five, Consul Lee.
Well, I mean, I'm just thinking out loud that this, this is going to end up becoming a financial discussion eventually, right? I mean, there'll be financial recommendations come onto this.
They don't have finances. It just, it would go to the Facilities Department.
And they would, I mean, whatever, whatever improvements are recommended, it's, it's obviously going to be an expenditure. So I think, even though I think it lands, it probably the discussion lands in this one, it'll end up going to finance eventually, I'm thinking, if you come to recommendations, right?
I don't know.
Yeah?
I'm, I mean-
I have no idea what-
I'm not sure, but I just think that-
Okay. I, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying why, I, maybe it should just be, maybe it should go to finance and talk, you know, talk about what, what it would be, what that expense would be, to make those recommendations, but-
I think he would primarily just like to talk about what it is that the commission would like to see done.
Okay.
And then from there, it can go wherever.
Okay. All right. I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Consul in seat two, Consul Dion.
Yeah, as the Chair of this committee, I'm not opposed to doing it by any stretch of the imagination. I'm just thinking in my mind, upgrades and improvements, capital projects, I would have thought would have been more in line with Public Works than my committee. But like I said, I'm not opposed to doing it at all, anything I can do to help. I'm, I'm on board. I just, I don't know. I think we're all, I think we're all a little bit confused as to exactly, you know, what slot this fits into.
I think that they want a little bit of a sounding board to discuss with the committee. These are the things that we, as members of the Commission of Disability, would need. For example, Mr. Paselli said, he offered the city, he is certified ADA compliance officer. He did all the Braille signs when he lived in Worcester, I believe it was. And he said, when they did Braille signs here, I offered to go and read all the Braille signs to make sure. He said, and then nobody let me know. And I do want to be involved, and I do want to help with whatever's going on in the community. I, I just don't think that he, that the committee feels like maybe they're being heard or they're being utilized. So I just thought, at least a discussion in your committee might come up with some game plan of how they could feel more included. So.
That's fine.
With that, I yield. Thank you.
With that, I yield also.
Motion to refer and adopt the resolution has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Have a citation for Raymond Hay.
Motion to adopt has been made by Consul Pelletier, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the order granting, excuse me, we have the order scheduling a hearing.
Together?
Second. Motion to take items 12 through 14 together for street acceptances has been made by Consul Pereira, seconded by Consul Akadeem. Discussion.
If I may just mention one thing, Mr. President. When this, the first item, which is Bell Street, when it was heard, we received a communication from the city engineer. The original request was the acceptance of Bell extending from Corbett to a dead end. It was the recommendation of the city engineer at the time that this be accepted, acceptance of this road should require extending the road to connect it to Kennedy Street. So if it's-
Okay.
If the council is agreeable, we will advertise and notify the abutters of that change.
Were there any objections? Any of the abutters have any issue with that?
I think that's a very slippery-
We have not notified the abutters as of yet.
I think it's a very slippery slope for us to adopt this without having public input. So I think we should take item 12 and refer it to Public Works and Transportation.
This, item 12 would allow us to hold the public hearing, so-
Okay.
I suppose we can have that discussion at that time.
So is the suggestion, Madam Clerk, to adopt it, so we can have the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. But there is the perimeter put in place by the engineer that, that your office has received that states no work's going to be done, or no street will be accepted until specific things are done?
Yes, no work will be done prior to the council having a public hearing.
So we'll have that public hearing, and at that point, if we want to refer it to Public Works, we could do that?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. Motion to take items 12 through 14 together has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adopt items 12, 13, and 14, Bell Street, Granite Street, and Small Street?
Some of them.
Has been made by Consul Akadeem, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation- Motion to refer to Corporation Council made by Consul Peckham, seconded by Consul Dion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have a drain layer license.
Motion to approve the drain layer license made by Consul Peckham, seconded by Consul Akadeem. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have minutes of the planning board held on May 12.
Motion to adopt the minutes.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Consul Peckham, seconded by Consul Dion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have minutes of the City Council public hearings held on June-
Sir, motion to take items 18 through 22 together.
Motion so made.
Made by Consul Dion, seconded by Consul Akadeem. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to approve all minutes.
Second.
18, 19, 20, 21, and 22, made by Consul Akadeem, seconded by Consul Dion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Item number 23 is the invoice from KP Law for the services through March 31st.
Motion to approve.
Motion leave to withdraw.
I have, what, what, what?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Consul Akadeem. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Consul in seat four, Consul Vice President.
Yeah, so the process was supposed to be that I matched up the invoices and, and made sure that the, what we were voting on is correct. However, it was put on our agenda. Madam Clerk and yourself, I think had a miscommunication and, and thought that I had approved these, but this is the first that I've seen them, and just by glancing at it, I can tell that it's wrong. So I would, I would vote, give this leave to withdraw.
Could we table, no, we don't want to table it, because-
That's wrong.
Excuse me, I didn't hear one word she said, and I would like to hear it.
Can you say it all over again, Consul Vice President?
Yes, the process that we adopted was I was going to match up the invoices to whatever statement they sent in. This came in. Madam Clerk and yourself had a conversation. You both thought that I had reviewed and approved. I hadn't. The first I saw it was on the agenda, and I can tell just by looking at it that it's wrong. So my motion would be leave to withdraw.
Okay, just, and that's fine. Just so you know, Madam Clerk, we have our meeting scheduled for next week. It's a full council meeting. So we need to make sure that we get with our Consul Vice President and Attorney Goldberg to get it by next week, because it's the end of the fiscal year. So we want to make sure that we get the necessary bills paid.
Mr. President, if I may, we do have a list, we do have those regulations as well. And if the council office had, could have copies of what was sent, it would make it a lot easier for us to review as well.
So I think the process that we voted on was that either you or I would review it correct?
Mm-hmm.
Because we would know what was requested.
And that, and that copies all be sent to the council office, so that they can, again, I know by looking at it, one of these charges is for the Law Department, and I brought that to their attention, and we've been waiting for an updated bill, but we haven't received one. So-
Right.
To avoid the chance of not getting anything in time for, to be paid through this fiscal year, we just ask that this be placed on the agenda, but-
This be placed on the agenda?
Yeah, they did. It was, it was my oversight, quite, quite honestly. So I was hoping that we would get it on, what we-
There are two separate invoices, Counselor.
There are.
Yeah.
There are. So we, they, we will get with our Corporation Council, our attorney on this between now and next Tuesday, so they can get us an updated ledger, and we can have that discussion then. But before we give the item leave to withdraw, Consul Vice, Consul in seat eight-
Are we just looking at item 23, which is this one, not 23A?
Yes.
Which is the next one?
Right.
So just this one. Okay, so this one, putting on the side. Okay.
Motion to give item 23 leave to withdraw has been made by Consul Vice President. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Consul Peckham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have a thank you card from the family of Barbara Travassos.
Motion to accept, place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Consul Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through ordination.
Motion to pass through ordination.
Second.
Motion to pass through final ordination? I'm sorry.
Miscellaneous traffic.
Miscellaneous, miscellaneous, motion to pass through has been made by Consul Pereira, seconded by Consul Dion. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
We have the Flood Plains District Ordinance for Passage Through Final Ordination as amended.
Motion.
Motion to pass through final ordination as amended has been made by Consul Dion, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Hearing not, Consul in seat four, Consul Vice President.
This is the one that they were worried that we won't go to adopt it in time, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes. Could you please let her know that we did adopt it, and we did take it seriously?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, motion has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And the last ordinance for Passage Through Final Ordination as amended is the structure over public way permit.
Motion to pass through as, pass through ordination as amended has been made by Consul Dion, seconded by Consul Peckham. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on June 21st voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Consul Akadeem absent. This is handicap parking.
Motion, uh, motion to accept, adopt the emergency preamble has been made by Consul Pereira, seconded by Consul Peckham. Roll call. Roll call.
On adoption of the preamble, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation at a meeting held on June 21st voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Consulat Kadim absent and not voting.
Motion to pass.
Miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to pass, motion to pass through, Madam Clerk, before we go into that, the first item that we accepted, the emergency preamble, don't we have to pass that through all readings?
Yes.
Motion to pass the traffic handicap parking through all readings would be an appropriate